Officially, I am going to call this meeting to order of Commissioners' Court. And I would like to call for the invocation at this time and ask those that are present to please rise and we just remain standing and we will follow with the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Texas flags. And only because of my frame, I'm going to stand for the pledge, but I'll stand, stay seated for the prayer. Would you please bow your heads and remove any caps if you have them? Lord Jesus, I humbly ask that your presence comfort all of us here in Oasis County as you lead your people through unprecedented times. Thank you for keeping our thoughts and our words and our actions as a Commissioners' Court sharp and precise. I ask you also to guard all of us. For our Commissioners here today, for our employees, in particular for our healthcare workers and our first responders, I ask you to guard us. Give us your strength in the most inner part of our beings. Remind us every day that you are right here beside us. Help us to use our gifts that you have given us for such a time as this. Help us to lead our people here in Oasis County with wisdom and with purity of heart. In your most precious name, I pray. Amen. And then will Commissioner Gonzalez lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, to the flag, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, under the Texas flag, by the Constitution of Texas, on the statehood of God, one and the end of its own.
Okay, perfect. Well, we've now perfected the art of remote calling a meeting to order, and so I will ask that the clerk note that the time is, let's see, 9:15 a.m., and that we are on August the 5th, 2020, and we are situated, some of us virtually and others of us at the, in the third floor of the Oasis County Courthouse at 901 Leopard. And I do certify that I have heard all Commissioners present, and so there is a quorum at this time. If Timothy is in the room, he can give those in the room a safety briefing?
He is not, Judge.
Okay. Well, I would ask that somebody raise their hand that would agree to dial 911 in case of an emergency. And also, somebody to call 911 in the case of the need for a CPR to be administered.
Got it.
Is there somebody that would volunteer to do that in the courtroom?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Okay, great. And of course, you know, in case of an emergency, you would go out the doors, go down the stairway. Okay. Is there public comment at this time in the courtroom, Teresa? And then I'll ask Tyner if there's any public comment on our virtual streaming. First, let's ask if there's anybody in the courtroom or waiting in the hallway that is needing to visit with us regarding an item.
No, Judge, no one is here in person.
Okay. And Tyner, could you let me know if there's anybody streaming in the waiting or holding in the waiting room for us to invite in for public comment?
There are participants, Judge. I do see some hands being raised.
Okay, I see Jose Pereira. May I, may I call upon Jose first? I also see you, Keith Kirk, and I will call upon you second. And I also see another person, and I'm gonna make sure that I call upon them third, Varzavand Irani. And so, Varzavand, you will go third. So first, we'll hear from Jose Pereira. And I'll just remind everybody in public comment, if you'll just recall that we have, we don't have the ability to address you formally in a response, but we are happy to receive your comments, and I know all of your comments will be appreciated and valued. So, Jose.
Good morning, Judge, and Commissioner.
Good morning.
My name is Jose Pereira, and I live at 3725 Amanda Lane in the rural part of Oasis County. And I just wanted to express my support for one of the agenda items that's on the agenda today regarding Amanda Lane, the street we live on. And I'd ask that the Commissioners' Court accept our roadway as a county roadway. And we've already had meetings with Commissioner Vaughn and the Director of Public Works, and I think this is in the best interest of all parties involved.
Thank you, thank you, Jose. We'll transition from Mr. Pereira to Mr. Keith Kirk. Welcome.
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Court.
Good morning.
I'm Keith Kirk. I live at 15405 Palmeira Avenue. I'd like to discuss the vehicular ban of the beach closures. I firmly believe that the current vehicular ban imposed by the county judge is illegal overreach power, referencing 418.108G. County Judge or the Mayor of the municipality may control ingress or egress from a designated area under the jurisdiction authority of the county judge, mayor, and control the movement of persons in that area. The beach is either designated or it isn't. You can't just, I'm gonna not allow vehicular traffic and allow foot traffic. Texas Administrative Code 1331, Chapter 15.7, H4, subchapter does not prevent a local government from using its existing authority to close individual beaches, access points for emergency related to public safety. However, the standards and procedures for such emergency closure shall be included in its state-approved doom protection and beach access plan. So I pulled up the Oasis County Beach Management Plan adopted by the Commissioners' Court on July 14, 2010, Chapter 6, Subsection E, Paragraph 1, Public Necessity. The Commissioners' Court made by order, close areas of the public beach in case of public necessity. Public necessity shall be limited to environmental emergencies, public health and safety emergencies, and government entities. Performance of governmental functions whose importance justifies restriction of public access. The Commissioners' Court shall limit the closure of the smallest possible area in the shortest possible time necessary. At no other point in the Doom Protection and Beach Access Plan is there provision for the county judge to unilaterally close vehicular access during times of emergency. The plan also gives the authority to close beaches to the court, not the judge alone. So I'd like to cover a couple of trends of the positive cases given the various beach closures issued by the judge. So Easter weekend was a complete closure of the beach. Nobody allowed on the beach even for exercise. New cases prior and during the incubation period were downward trends. CDC says incubation period is a time from two to 14 days after contracting the virus. After the incubation period ends, the infection rate increased to 1.8 cases per day. The virus was transmitted at a higher rate after the incubation period closed for Easter weekend. The two-week period prior to Easter weekend, the trend was negative .3 cases per day, and the Easter weekend incubation period shows a trend of .03 cases per day. On Memorial Day weekend, the weekend was completely normal and open weekend. High school and college graduations also happened during this time. The two-week period prior to Memorial Day shows a trend of negative .3 cases per day. Incubation period after Memorial Day weekend showed a slight increase to negative .2 cases per day. And the two weeks following the incubation period, cases rapidly increased to an average of 5.7 per day. So this proves that the beach ban has had zero effect on positive case numbers. During July 4th, vehicular driving was banned starting on 3 July, the two-week time period prior showing the increase of 12 cases per day. The incubation period shows a drop of 10 cases per day and an increase of 11 cases per day after the incubation period. If you take this time period as a snapshot in time and ignore all the other data, you could argue this proves your point that the vehicular ban works. Problem with looking at this snapshot of time is that it's centered around the highest infection point for the county. Single highest reporting of positive cases in a day is exactly seven days after the beach is reopened to vehicular access. The seventh day falls directly in the center of the two to 14-day incubation period stated by the CDC. Even with vehicles not allowed to drive on the beach in July 4th weekend, it still caused the largest uptick in positive cases for the county. The vehicular ban did not help turn cases to a downward trend. The fact that the cases continue to incline after the vehicular ban shows that the ban is 100% ineffectual to positive case outcomes. This will go to show that banning vehicles from the beach not prevent people from celebrating Independence Day, it simply gave them less room to doing so, causing a much faster transmission rate. Thank you, then.
Thank you so much. I believe the next person in line was, and I hope I'm saying your name correctly and that it's listed, first name and then last name, but I might have it reversed. Is it Mr. or Ms. Varzavand Irani?
Good morning, Judge. No, you did a good job.
Oh.
Good morning, Judge.
Hello. Good morning to you.
And Commissioners, my name is Varzavand Irani. So you were pretty close.
I was pretty close.
Yes. I'm a resident over at 3781 Amanda Lane, and I as well, similar to Jose's comments, I as well want to support the agenda item wherein the county accept the maintenance for Amanda Lane. I think it's in the best interest for all parties. And again, once again, thank you for allowing us to comment today.
Thank you so much. We also have another person waiting in the waiting room, and it is Bethany, could be Santalan or Santian. Ms. Bethany?
Yes, that's right.
You're on and ready to deliver your comments to Commissioners' Court.
Okay, my name is Bethany Santian. I live at 3733 Amanda Lane, and I'd also like to make a comment on the agenda item for having Amanda Lane taken over by the county. I approve of that, or I support that subject, so I would just like to say, you know, thanks again for letting us come out here and comment, and it would be also a means for everybody that, you know, that we get taken over as a county road.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your comments. Tyner, I don't see anybody else, but would like to always do a confirmation. Public comment is such an important time, and we welcome it here. Are there anybody else? Because I don't see anybody yet on my screen.
Judge, I don't see any other hands up.
Okay. Also, I'm getting some, getting a text that it is very hard to hear me on Zoom, and I'd like for somebody to maybe go outside the courtroom or maybe have somebody like Monica check to make sure that my audio is good for the audience that's listening in. I'm glad that you can hear me in the courtroom, but I gotta make sure that the audience on Zoom can hear me as well.
Judge, I hear you really well, just for whatever that's worth, and I'm on Zoom as well.
Okay, no, that's worth a lot. I mean, that's, I got it from somebody out, and it's just nice to know that we can check on it. Okay. And so, having said that, we, there are no more public comment participants. We're gonna move on, and I am going to follow some good advice that I think it will help all of us, and that is, I'm gonna go through our agenda and leave COVID-19 response, which is under F1. I'm gonna move that to our very last piece so that we can proceed with the agenda items, and then we will discuss the COVID-19 response last. And I've alerted Melissa to this, and this actually helps her very much with her schedule, so that's what we're going to do. So we'll move on to the adoption resolution of orders. I noticed that there were no minutes here, but I guess we have already completed all of those, Tyner. But we're looking at the safety and health professionals complaining August 10 through August 16 as safe and sound week, and
I do have that here, Judge.
Wonderful.
And I'll go ahead and read it, Judge.
Wonderful.
This is a safe and sound week, August 10 through 16, 2020. Whereas, New Oasis County, Texas, has safety and health professionals who are committed to saving lives every day. Whereas, the safety and health professionals provide training and education for workers to identify hazards, for management to follow up on the hazards, and for company safety committees, employees to participate in problem solving and implementation of corrective actions. Whereas, the core elements of an effective safety and health program are management leadership, worker participation, and finding and fixing workplace hazards. Whereas, accidents and injuries in the workplace are preventable, and employees must be engaged, educated, and aware of unsafe conditions and unsafe behaviors. Whereas, all employees play a role in keeping each other safe while protecting themselves, coworkers, and property. Whereas, New Oasis County, Texas, encourages all employers and workers to contribute to the safety initiative and help make New Oasis County a safe and healthy place to work. Now therefore be it resolved that the New Oasis County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim the week of August 10 through 16, 2020, as safe and sound week.
Excuse me, Judge. We have two safety professionals here in the courtroom. They're gonna come to the podium.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name's Leonard Barza. I'm basically a professional that works for MMR Constructors, Architectural Services Christie. We're gonna have a safety rodeo next week, and we'd like to invite any of the Commissioners or the Judge to come by and speak to our employees. We're gonna be doing some training, just so that we reiterate how our industry is still going strong, and, but we still need to stay safe and in cooperation with the OSHA program. Safe and Sound Week, we're gonna be celebrating that next week. So we thank you for adopting us.
We're good. Okay, what happened? Your mic, Judge.
I want to thank you, Leonard, for coming to Commissioners' Court today and really doing such a fine job of, you know, it's amazing during this coronavirus pandemic, everything that we know about PPE really comes from the safe, from industry. Everything that you guys have been practicing your entire careers is coming to bear right now. And so, if anything, Oasis County, because we are a heavy industrial community, understood the value of safety. They understood the value of personal protection equipment. And because they understood that, they lent a hand in so many ways. So today, our court and our county salutes those members of the safety professional community, and really, our hats off to you and to all your brothers and sisters. We are going to be living in a different world now that we have experienced a pandemic that is so contagious, it's so invasive in our lives. And I'm just grateful that those of you that have been living safety as part of your daily work are helping those of us who are becoming more acutely aware of how important it is. So I hope that you will take our praise back to everybody that you work with, all of your colleagues. And again, it's perfectly fitting that this month in August, we salute everybody to be safe and sound. Thanks, Tyner. And I'll sign all of these resolutions later this afternoon. I'm sure someone can drop off a bag to my home. Okay. If there's no other resolutions pending, Tyner, we will move on to item number two, A through G. A through G is the consent agenda, and if there is anybody that needs to remove an item for further discussion, would you let me know now?
Excuse me, Judge. Laura's stating you need to approve that resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the Safe and Sound Week?
Motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, super. Thank you for keeping us on track there with the resolutions. And now, let's proceed to the consent agenda items A through G. Are there any Commissioners that need to remove an item for the purposes of further discussion or information? Okay, hearing none, would I have a motion to approve items A through G?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
I have a question.
Okay, which letter?
G.
G, all right. So let's take a motion to approve items A through F, A through F.
Second.
Got a motion and a second with Commissioner Modest, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
Is G the same one we talked about last week on the change in the policy, or is that the different one? On the vacation?
It's the same one, Commissioner.
The same one? So we're saying here that
Yes, that's correct. Julie is following through with what the will of the court was to suspend that rule just this one time instead of permanently. So I believe
Okay.
this was Julie's instructions from the court, last court, and this will suspend it only this one time.
Okay, all right. I'll just
And what we mean, and what we mean by this one time, Tyner, is really more probably appropriately said this fiscal year.
Right, for this budget.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
So if that answers your question, may I have a motion to
So move.
Okay, and a second, please?
Second.
All right. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, great. Moving right along to agenda items now. This is our regular agenda items, and we are going to proceed to item A1, and that is discuss and consider the selection of the Smith Group, Inc., for design services only for the new medical examiner's office, and authorize staff to proceed negotiations for final contracts. So this means that there is not a contract yet determined, but that the court would give the authority to the county attorney's office to begin to work on a design services contract, which would be under the procurement of engineering services, i.e. professional services, architectural and/or engineering services, I guess in this case, architectural, professional services exemption to the procurement, the normal procurement. And Tyner, do you have anything further that you could add before we entertain questions and a motion?
Well, I will tell you, Judge, that we do have Chris Nor with the Smith Group on. We also have Kyle LeBlanc is on, and JP Braum is on. And if, Chris, you might just, since it does say authorize staff to proceed with negotiations for a final contract, if you would like, I think that authorizes you to speak briefly about two approaches y'all may have.
Yes, thank you, Tyner, and thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for allowing us to come on and consider Smith for the project from a design perspective. I think that based on the way the court is leaning at this point is that there are a number of options from a contracting perspective on the design side. But I know that there isn't a 100% understanding of how the construction manager at risk process would roll out, but I think in working with the county, the, and your program manager, and any other administrative staff on the county to work through the contract, we can identify the best path forward as far as how far into design or construction administration that that contract might occur. So we have an opportunity and construction manager at risk to be able to set a guaranteed maximum price, a GMP, and it may be that the county chooses to only move up to a point, and that point might be just that GMP, and then a secondary contract could be let for the final design and construction administration services. Or it could be a full contract from today on through construction administration. So working with the county, I do believe that we have a good amount of flexibility in trying to understand the best way of meeting your needs.
And Judge, I think what we'll do is we'll pull in Juan Pimentel, purchasing agent, and the county attorney to work through and see which way we think is gonna be the best way to recommend this to court. And me and Belinda and Michael had a discussion when we were posting the agenda Friday that we're gonna get things in order to approach the construction manager at risk. We may have that in order for the court to consider next court or the one after, depending on Michael Robinson's speed in which to get that done. So we have some options, and we'll present those to the court.
So we table this today or what?
No, you have to select.
But I got a question. On what we do right now, actually, just for the design, right? Not for construction? If we do design now, we can always say we're gonna, the construction can come next year at the next budget or whatever. It doesn't have to be this, does it have to be this year?
That's correct. This is, the purpose of this item is just to consider the selection of the Smith Group. The Smith Group are experts in this field, currently conducting, as you know from previous presentations, over five different new buildings across this country that are similar in forensic
And they, but they will give us
Construction.
A couple of options, right, to look at as far as the design? Maybe one, two, and three? As far as the size of the building and what goes in the building, you know what I'm saying? I'm just, the design has not been set in place as what we're gonna have, right? I mean
That's correct. Let me, let me just, but let me, I know it's hard because there's a delay here, but I've been trying to say that this is for selection of the Smith Group and for the purposes of directing a team of people to work with the Smith Group, and then you will get a chance, as we will get a chance as a court, to look at the scope of work of the services that they would provide. And that, that is why the program managers are also involved, is that they will help create that scope of work and the type of procurement that we would use.
And the cost?
In this case, it was mentioned last time that there would be some advantages to construction manager, management at risk.
Do we know what the cost would be to hire the Smith Group?
Well, that's why we're going to have Laura enter into the negotiations. It will be based upon most likely design services, architectural services, or typically a percentage of overall estimated cost. So we can probably get you a range, but that's what we're doing here, is we're saying the Smith Group, you are our choice to proceed with design service, the services, and in order to get us to the next step, we're gonna talk to you about the type of services you would provide and how much money that would cost, and then it would come back to court. So this is just to get it in Laura's hands, but Laura would be working with procurement, would be working with the program manager to define all of those details and bring it back to court for that contract to be approved by all of us.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Judge.
Absolutely.
I went and toured it yesterday with Commissioner Chesney, and there is no doubt, I believe, we need one. It's very small and very confined for the group of people working in there. I'm sure it was fine in 1995, but times have changed. So in going into this today, after this comes back to us, it's just gonna be for the cost to decide. We have no other obligation to them, that's one question. And the other question is, we kind of have a number that's been thrown out there. I'm sure that you've already considered on options on how we could possibly pay for it. Did you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I was on mute. So the first, the first part is, that's correct, design services only with no obligation at all. The one thing I should have said is that how would we pay even for the design services? Those were, those funding sources would be our CO 2019. So under the dollars that you've mentioned that you say you've kind of thrown out, and you're right, we don't really have a great, perfect estimate yet, but if you were to just use the number, let's say, 20 million. Typically, architectural services, but I'd like Chris to chime in here, Chris Nor, is typically, I've seen it anywhere between as a low of 10% and the highs 15% on architectural services. But JP, you're on. If you don't mind, could you help us answer these questions with regards to just ranges of costs so that we can get a feel for it? And then the funding source, again, would be to take from the COs, and then funding as to the whole project And then funding as to the whole project, we've talked about three different mechanisms. At one time, there was an opportunity to work with an outside private group, and they had initiated interest in funding the entire cost, and then it would be a leaseback from them. We've also talked about the same type of, that was a local group. Then we've also talked about private companies being interested in financing, like you see a lot of GSA contracts where, again, they would front the money. You might pay a down payment, if you will, which could be the land and the down, and the, and the design services. And again, you would pay over time and they would run the maintenance and operations. Or the third mechanism would be that you would have some sort of a borrowing, whether it's a tax note or whether it's a certificate of obligation in the future to pay. And yesterday I had the opportunity to visit with Frost Bank and their F A team. And of course, you'll recall that Frost Bank was one of our underwriters in our last certificate of obligation. And they hold a lot of our, our paper, so to speak. And we think that after talking amongst each other, interest rates are so low right now, and we think they'll stay low, that the cheapest money out there is a borrowing on, on the market. But having said that, this is where you bring all your financial people in a room with us, and we have a great workshop about what the best way to achieve our goals are. Because either way, this building will, will probably, whether you borrow from the market or borrow from an individual or an entity, it's probably a 15-year payout. You could do seven, but typically the structures that I've seen are probably you pay over time 15 years. So those are, those are some of the ideas that I think have been brought to light. Outside local money, outside institutional money, and the third would be a borrowing.
Okay, that answered my question, thank you.
Chris, is it okay if I ask Chris real quick, like before I get to you, Commissioner? Was that accurate, 10 to 15%? As, I mean, please correct me, is that a, I'm just doing ranges for the Commissioners at this time, based on, on other major projects that, that I've been involved with. That seems to be the range of architectural services, but not always. I mean, there's always uniqueness. Could you help us understand that?
And although this is a unique project, that's a, a good range to start with. The 15% might be ever so slightly high, but it depends on the amount of services that the county would like the design team to be holding. So commissioning, for instance, might be an item that the county would hold outside of the contract for design or could come inside of it. So there, there are a number of, of different disciplines that could be involved in the project that, that might push it higher. But I think that the numbers that you, you identified, Judge, are, are good ones to, to work with.
Okay, thank you. And then we have another question on the floor, Commissioner.
Can I go, is that me?
Yeah, that was you.
Thank you. And Judge, let me, let me start my, my comments by saying I, I believe that we have outgrown this facility. The building is, it looks structurally sound. It, it, it's a nice looking building on the outside, but without a doubt, the facility is too small to handle the workload. I, I'm, you know, I'm concerned about all those employees being scrunched in there for their safety and well-being. I think they've done a phenomenal job of staying safe and being very conscientious about their work. So I wanted to certainly take a minute to compliment them, and they were very accommodating. We, we went, we, we did that kind of the last minute because this was on the agenda, and I wanted to go out and see it, and they accommodated our schedule, Dr. Shaker, all of those folks. So thank them. My questions are, are along the lines of numbers and dollars and, and those kind of things. Do I feel comfortable at this point with a $25 million number hanging out there? Not really, but that doesn't mean I couldn't be at some point. Right now, I'm very concerned over the, the, the amount of money that we're looking at spending on all kinds of different projects. Because I'm just, I'm concerned over the, the timing of some of this. I think Commissioner Gonzalez asked, could we possibly, you know, push this back to, to another year? I think that was good that it was answered yes, we don't have to, you know, rush it. I am very interested in the alternate financing that you talked about, Judge. Well, something that I'd thrown out, and I know you'd said, you know, looked at that too. I would still be interested in that, to see if there were outside people that, if they could get a return on investment, maybe they, you know, would be interested. I know there's big REITs out there, there's teacher retirement groups, there's lots of big institutional type groups that would be interested in investing in real estate, especially with, with a guaranteed return and especially backed by a municipality and the, and the good faith and credit of that municipality. So I, I would like to look at those things before we get too far down the line. But, and, and I guess the question on the, the specific questions today on, on the Smith Group is, how, how far, in other words, you're saying design and everything could be 10%, 15%? And, and let's say the number that's been thrown out has been 25 million. So I certainly wouldn't want to commit to 10 to 15% cost on 25 million today because basically we're saying, and I know we're just making a selection and we, we can't talk cost and all that stuff, but I do think it's important because I, I don't want there to be so much work done by the Smith Group, and then we get a 200, $300,000 bill and we decide, well, we're gonna scale it down or we're gonna do it next year or anything like that. So I, I'm just a little concerned on, on, on that. So maybe if someone could address that part of it, I'd appreciate it. And also if we had, in fact, found an outside investor to do it, then my experience would show that that outside investor would pay for that cost to design the building and do the things like that, because it would be their building that they would be getting a return. So if, if we're looking at those alternate financing sources, why the need to get Smith on board with the contract today? And I know I said a lot, I'm sorry, if I need to break that down, let me know, but some of that was just comment, the other is a little question. So Judge, I apologize, that was a multifaceted question. If I need to break it down, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
No, sir, I took notes, I, I'm ready. Well, for starters, and I'm sure you, you're aware of this because you're in the financial world, that, that the muni market is basically 60 basis points ahead of most likely any outside investor. So where we can get, you know, a lot better rates on the market, any private investor would have a higher interest rate. And of course, the other concern that our auditor and our F A have is that if you used an outside individual, that that leaseback would come out of our N and O rather than our INS. And that could be an issue for us. We have lots of room to grow on INS, we have a very low debt ratio right now. We sit very, very well in the top 25 counties. And it's also quite interesting that the taxable rates are almost the same as the tax-free rates on the muni market. And so there might be an opportunity to do a refinance before, even though we have callables at 2022, and I think the next one's at 2025. And I've done extensive research, not only with our senior underwriters from Frost and, and asked them for, for their advice, but also with Estrada Inahosa, asked them to come in. Of course, talked to, you know, Blakely Fernandez, who really specializes in public finance and works for Noises County. And we decided that all options need to be on the table. You cannot make a good decision unless you have all options. And so all of the things that, that you mentioned have been suggested and will be brought forth. The best thing is for the county is what's the least amount of money you have to pay back? And did you take into consideration that if somebody else owns the building, they'd be taking the maintenance and operation over? And so all of those are, are going to be looked at. But, but make no mistake, the, the purpose of the, of the Smith Group is to get design started. And I just want to make sure that you got your math straight. It wouldn't be 200,000, 10% of, of 25 million would be 2.5 million dollars, so.
No, I just meant an initial bill.
Oh, oh, right, right, right. Okay, I just want to make sure that you knew 10% was, was much greater than that.
Well, I still don't want to get a $2 million bill, and then we don't do it either. But I was just thinking, you might initial bill and then we wait.
Right, and, and, and again, this court needs to make up its mind, you know, you, you're gonna, if you're gonna do a project, you have to recognize that, that right now is the best time ever to do projects because of the interest rates being historic lows. And you, and that there is no doubt in most financial advisors' minds that they will remain low. And so you could wait a little bit, but you wouldn't, you want to capitalize on, on the sure thing now. And I think that knowing that we need this building for growth, knowing that we have opportunities before us to put people to work, that's what economic development projects do, is they put good people to work in construction, in engineering, in electrical and plumbing, and even in the medical field. And so one of the opportunities that, that lies before us is how do we begin if you're not willing to begin? And so this agenda item says, look, we took the dollars to do the feasibility assessment. We now know, not only by talking to our professionals, Dr. Shaker, Dr. Fernandez, but you guys have seen it yourself, and we've had great presentations, that this building is, is important and it's, and it's needed. And it serves 19 counties, so it's a regional facility. And I think that the Smith Group has proven themselves to be experts in the field, and this selection today will allow us to begin the process. And you'll have another shake at it, so to speak, next time around to be able to, to talk more financing. If you'd like, I haven't looked at the calendar, but I would be happy to set it up as an agenda item to discuss financing so that that way simultaneous with the contract being presented, you would understand what the financing could look like.
And that'd be, and that'd be great, Judge. I'm just really wanting to make sure that we don't go too far down the road with this group. If we pick them and spend, and what I was trying to allude to was, and spend a couple 300,000 and then decide we don't want to do it, or we don't want to do, we, I'm not, we're not gonna decide we don't want to do it, but we don't want to do the scope that we're talking about, or we want to do it in phases, and, or, or an outside investor's gonna come in and use somebody else. I, I just don't want to, that's what I was alluding to. I, I, I get it, 10% or 20, to be 2 to 3 million dollars, depending on the scope of the building. And then, so that, that was just, you know, kind of it. And then I know you addressed this before, and I know, I, I believe that the Smith Group had indicated, hey, we're gonna hire local people. Obviously, this is a huge project, huge project, no matter if it's a $10 million project, 20 million. And I, I want to make real sure that we've got a lot of, a lot of participation. I, I'm, I'm assuming that there was nobody else locally that could have taken the lead on this. I'm sure we'll hear from people that say they could have. I don't know, you know, if, maybe you could address that again. I know they said they would address local, they would hire local people, because you brought that up. But if you could just address one more time why we went with the Smith Group and not a local group to take the lead on this, that would be a, a good question that I'm sure we're gonna get as we go down the line.
Sure, and you'll recall last Commissioner's Court, I asked that exact question and advocated for that and spoken with the Smith Group multiple times, and they completely understand the value of, of local. But I'm gonna let Chris say it again, because that's always nice to hear from, from the group itself. But the answer to your question is the Smith Group in 2017, when you were on the court, was brought forth by Judge Neal as being an expert in the field. Medical Examiner's Office and forensic institutes are a niche. And no, there was nobody here in our community that does medical examiner forensic types of offices. Think of them as very specialty type hospitals. And, and the Smith Group, who hails from Arizona, had been actually chosen by Judge Neal. And I picked up that notebook, read it, was impressed with their credentials, spoke with our public works, asked if they would initiate those initial meetings, and about seven, eight months back, that process began. Through that time period, they've come down to Corpus on Corpus Christi on multiple occasions and done a lot of interviews and spent a lot of quality time with all stakeholders. And I believe them to be the best group for this job, not only because of their national exposure, but there's a lot of things that need, are sensitive, as you might imagine, in a forensic type of environment. And when I say sensitive, I mean from the loved ones' perspective. How we design and, and the opportunities to make mistakes, quite frankly, are grand. And I think it's very important to use a, a group that has already seen everything that can go wrong and, and how you would go about to make sure that those would not happen, including air filtration. And so I think that the Smith Group is on the, on the call, and I'd like to ask them again. My concern was, Chris, and I think the very first time I met you, I said typically when I've seen these mon, these big projects get built, they do team up with local architects. And I asked whether or not that would be in keeping with your practice, and I'll let you answer, Chris.
And Judge, before, before he does, I just want to make sure, I'm, you did, and I want to reiterate, I, I know very well that you, you did that the last time, I appreciate that, that's what I said. I, I have no doubt that they have heard loudly and clearly from this court that we want a lot of local participation on this. I just really wanted, you know, you to reiterate because I think that is important to note that, that they are a niche group and, and this is, this was, and they've been working on this for years. And I think that's always good for people to hear that. And I know Judge Neal will appreciate that, that you appreciate the work that he did on that. So if they want to answer, they can, but I, I, I fully believe they know we want local folks. I just wanted people to understand.
Okay, that's fine, sure. And I, I know, I know that, and I think that when we get the contract back, maybe that gives them some time to come in, share with us how they would go about that process.
Great, and Judge, just so you know, and I'm gonna vote on this when you're ready. As you know, I, I may have to step away just for a little bit, because Congressman Cloud is out here with Representative Hunter. We're, we're doing some of the observation that you asked me to come out and do. So I didn't want people to think I was skipping out for a bad reason if I miss a vote or so. I just wanted to make sure you knew too that if I wasn't on, it's only because I'm meeting with them here in a few minutes.
Well, given that I set it up, I absolutely know. And, and I'll be sure and, and, and explain to the court just real quick, like, let's do this vote, and then I'll, I'll give you that dispensation here. Is there anybody else that has any questions for Mr. Nor of the Smith Group? I appreciate him always being on these calls. I've, I've just found them to be incredibly professional, and not just in their competency of their work product, but just in their ability to stay with us on these calls and really hear the, the concerns and questions of the court. It's highly appreciated. Hearing no further.
Very informative for us as well.
Oh, good, hearing no further discussion, I'd like to make the motion, I'm very proud to do so, to consider the selection of the Smith Group for design services, the new medical examiner. And I would like the motion to also reflect that I'm authorizing staff, and, and the staff is those that we've named already, including the lead, which would be the county attorney's office, to proceed with negotiations of final contract. And I would ask for a second.
Second.
Commissioner Gonzalez, second.
Okay, thanks, it's hard to hear, appreciate that, Teresa. And all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, super duper. And then, yes, Commissioners, we're gonna excuse Commissioner Chesney for just a moment. He'll come right back in, but just so that everybody knows in the audience, Congressman Cloud and his staff are visiting us here in Noises County today. We're most grateful, and because I am in quarantine and doing everything virtually, I've asked Commissioner Chesney to give him a tour of the damaged Bob Hall pier. I've also asked Chairman Hunter to be there as well. Brent, Renee Garcia from the General Land Office should be joining you. And I want to thank Alana Scott, Alana Scott, who's the Deputy Director of Coastal Parks. And all of you make up a great team, and I know you guys are gonna kind of, I want you to make sure you zoom with, with Scott Cross whenever, when he gets there, because he can give the background, and then you're gonna take him over to the, to the location, to the site location itself. And just really appreciate you guys doing that, and I'll be calling him afterwards, so. Okay, thank you. And the next item is discuss and consider approval of the joint election agreements with London, West Osso, Cal Allen, City of Corpus Christi, City of Robstown, RISD, Banquete ISD, and Port A. And this is all in regards to the November 3, 2020 election. These are joint election agreements that we have with these schools. And so Tyner, do you have anything, or is Kara? I'm not sure who would like the lead on this.
Judge, I'll go ahead and take this one. What we do as we have done in the past. And then it started by the City of Punchingme. The City of Corpus Christi has actually al- already had their first reading in city council over, over the joint election agreement with us. And when I was talking to the county clerk last week, we went ahead and added all the names of the entities that we expect to join. It's a cost sharing situation where costs are shared as a percentage of registered voters in that particular locale.
Hey, Tyner, I don't want to, hey, Tyner, I don't want to interrupt, but I think.
Hey, Tyner, I don't want to, hey, Tyner, I don't want to interrupt, but I think, I've got somebody who's a hand up up here, wants to say a thing, say something about what you're saying. Kara?
Hi, Tyner, the entities that are listed for the joint agreement, serve right now, these are all the entities that have sent a notice to me with an intent to join us. We should be getting other ones, so there would, you know, Flower Bluff, ISD, Delmar, CCISD.
Tlosso.
Yeah, TM, but these are the ones that have so far indicated to me by sending an email that they want to join us. So, that's where we're at. So, we'll come back, I just wanted to get the ball rolling, we usually do this, you know, beginning in September, but I wanted to get the ball rolling and going.
And they always do anyway, I mean, they always, so I don't have, I'll move, we, we accepted, you have to, do we need a motion for that?
I made it.
Second.
Chief. Judge. I'm, I'm letting her know.
The motion is second.
Tyner. Tyner, were, were you complete with your comments? Would you like, can we go back to Tyner so he can finish, please?
Uh, yes, it's just a, a cost sharing. We've always attached one sample in the past, and that way the county clerk can get off and running and give her agreements in order. And again, it's, it's cost sharing, and this is what we've done in the past, and we recommend approval.
The motion is second to the floor.
And the motion is made by Gonzalez, is that correct?
Commissioner Vaughn.
Commissioner Vaughn and.
Mr. Vaughn, thank you.
Second by Gonzalez.
And the second?
Commissioner Jack.
Okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those same sign. Okay, and then the second is.
Aye, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
It was a yes, not a no.
Yes, yes, aye for Commissioner Chesney for the clerk's purposes. And the next item is item number three, and it's discuss and consider the implementation of filing fees in the office of Nuñez County Clerk. And Tyner, you did some research on this, and this gen, this is for information at this time, would you be able to start us off, and then Kara can also provide some background information with regards to an archive fee, and the difference between an archive fee, I believe, and the preservation fee was at, was at issue, as I understand it?
Yeah, and, and I emailed yesterday some excerpts from the statute internally. Also, I've communicated some advisories exploring these fees with the County Attorney's Office, and, and Elba in the Auditor's Office keeps track of this. And just real briefly, I, I think at times people get some of the terminology mixed up a little bit with regard to management, preservation, archive fee. So just real quickly, the records management and preservation fee is section 118.0216 of the Local Government Code. The county clerk sets that fee, not the court, and that fee is not to exceed ten dollars. It's currently collected at the five dollar rate, and Elba in the Auditor's Office reports to us that the collection, the collection of that annually is about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So that's records management and preservation. Then you have a records archive fee, and if, if you recall, now, this is 118.025 of the Local Government Code, that's not more than ten dollars as well. The reason I bring it up is, just like the district clerk, the, the Commissioners Court, in order to even collect that fee, has to have that fee in their budget. Now, it's my understanding from Dale that we actually carried the district clerk's records archive fee on the books for as, as many years as three years, until the district clerk did in fact provide a plan, an archive plan, which is required, and it's approved by the Commissioners Court, which we did for the district clerk. And it's my understanding then that the district clerk began collecting that, that fee as well. For the county clerk, right now, that fee is not being collected for two reasons. The court, it's my understanding, has not budgeted for that, and second of all, the Commissioners Court has not approved, like we did for the district clerk, has not approved an archive plan from the clerk.
That's not true. That's incorrect.
Okay.
Okay.
If you could just let, let's let Tyner finish, we're going to give you a chance to maybe take the mic and, and be able to help us here.
Um, there's, there's a, a third fee that we looked at briefly, which is a, and, and Judge, I don't know if you recall this during legislative session, that the real property record filing fee.
Yes.
Hidalgo and Cameron are carved out of that, and we examined possibly, including Nuñez County, and I think in fact that there was a bill drafted, but it just didn't go anywhere.
Right.
And, and that, that would be a real property records filing fee. And again, that's only Hidalgo and Cameron. So, I'd like, I'd like to be corrected if I'm incorrect.
Okay, sure.
So, I'll listen to the clerk.
Okay, so Kara, you want to take us through those three particular, they're different fees, the records management fee that you set, and then the second one, which is the archive fee, and then the third is this bracketed records, real property records filing, which doesn't apply to us anyway, but you could always mention it. Do you want to take us through that, starting with the first one, the records management and preservation fee?
Right.
Is there something there that, that needs correction?
No, nothing, I, well, other than, I'm not sure why this is even being discussed. This isn't my item.
Oh, well, it's being discussed, it's being discussed because it's on the agenda.
Why, obviously, but I'm not sure why it's on the agenda, but okay, um, yeah.
I think it's because a commissioner put it on there.
Who?
A commissioner or a county judge, anybody from our court can put it on there.
Okay, so you're questioning my records management fee of five dollars? It pays for the system that we have. It pays for, that's what we collect it for. It doesn't need.
No, I, I think, I think you asked a question, and I want to make sure that you understand the process of how something that's on the agenda.
I understand, I do understand, but again, when you.
Okay, well, then we're, we're done there.
Okay, well, when you put something on the agenda that has to do with my office, usually out of professional courtesy is to ask.
Is because you collect five dollars, we want to make sure that's what you collect, and that two hundred and ninety thousand is the approximate amount. That's what we want to make sure, did Tyner issue that correctly? Those facts?
Yes, he did.
Okay, and so you have five dollars more that you could give, and that you said you were going to give last year, but have not. Is that correct?
No, that is incorrect. That I can't give, what do you, to give?
You never said, you never said that?
To give? Collect. No, I'm not going to collect.
When I say give, I mean, you have it to give, in the sense of you have it to yield to the court as a, as, as the county as a source of revenue.
No, I don't. That's not, it's very specific, but it doesn't work that way. It doesn't go just to the county general fund, although y'all do transfer thirty thousand dollars out of that, and I've asked that to stop, y'all have transferred thirty thousand dollars to the general fund.
Yeah, I think you're missing the point, I think the point here is that it says in the statute not more than ten dollars.
Correct.
And there's obviously, it sets forth what you can use it for. The question the court has for you today is, you only have five dollars being levied, do you still have another five to give? Is it your interpretation of the statute?
That I could go up to ten to collect? Yes, I could, but I'm not.
Okay.
The reason being, would you like to know the reason? Because what I'm collecting now pays for our system, it pays for it, and we have money left over, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars left over from that annually. So it pays for the system that we have in place, where we do the filing, the recording, that's what it's supposed to, automation, and so that's what it's supposed to pay for, and going up, an extra, adding another five dollars to it, asking folks to pay for that, but for what? There's.
What about the preservation of it?
Unless we need to, unless we need to, then I can, and I will.
Does that money go towards the preservation of your records?
Yes, it does, because once we put it into the medium, it also goes to the microfilm as well, of those records.
Right, so in the preservation, it's my understanding that you've begun some preservation with CoFile, but you have not completed preservation. There's lots and lots of records that still need to be preserved, is that correct?
Are we in the ar, is that the archives? The archive fee now?
No, I'm asking you if under the words preservation, would that qualify to preserve any of your records?
A bit, it can help, it will help with the archiving of it. That management and preservation can supplement.
Right, so it can supplement CoFile, you, you work, you have a, you have a contract with CoFile.
Correct.
And you've, you've started, but you haven't, I mean, there's so many records, so, so voluminous.
Right, right.
You couldn't possibly have gotten, I mean, you don't, not your fault, just couldn't possibly get to the preservation of all those records, is that correct?
Correct, no, not yet.
Right, so, so when we say that your five dollars is taking care of everything, that's not really accurate.
No, that is accurate, because there's two different fees, Judge.
Preserving all the records you could.
Because there's two different fees. You're talking about.
Well, that's why I'm asking you, I'm asking you whether under the preservation, you could supplement to preserve records, that word preservation.
That, yeah, that does preserve the records, the ongoing preservation of the records. It does. When we're talking about historical records, then you talk about the other fee.
That's right.
Okay, so, yeah, so right now it does.
But under the preservation, are you, are you able to digitize everything that you want under the preservation?
Everything is already digitized.
So there's.
Every record has been digitized.
I thought you said it could supplement your older historical records.
And I said it could, but it, we don't need to at this moment, because it's being, that's an archival fee. It's kind of, it's, I understand it's confusing.
But your archival fee isn't being levied right now.
Well, and that's an interesting, that we can talk about with the county attorney as well, and the history of that. Can I go bring, discuss that now?
Do you recall that you and I and Dale and the entire team had a conversation a year ago during budget season, where you discussed, and I have emails that memorialize that you had a five dollar fee that you would like to increase to assist the budget?
No, assisting the budget?
You don't remember that conversation?
No.
And you don't remember all the months that we've been talking?
We did have a conversation, I do remember our conversation, and I emailed you to it.
About bringing this item forward, and you said that.
Which one, Judge?
You would prefer waiting till after the elections?
Or?
And which we did for you?
What, which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about fees in general.
But which fee?
That you had a fee of five dollars left, there's only one fee that I can figure out that you have five dollars left.
No, that's not our conversation, I recall our conversation as being, there, I think there is a fee, in, in fact, I have the email I sent to you, which you didn't reply to, and that I discussed at length with Tyner, and that I looked to see, and I looked, and it was Hidalgo, it doesn't apply to us. And I told you, and I told you that, we had that discussion, and I said, hey, let me look into it and see.
Right, that's not what, that's not what we're talking about, but the, the point is that you have a five dollar fee and left on preservation, and on the records archive fee, you can have that to not exceed more than ten dollars.
Correct.
Are you interested in doing that one, to get your archives up to snuff, so to speak?
Yes, I may be. As right now, it is, four dollar is budgeted, it was passed, looking at Dale, it has been, was budgeted, there was a plan in place. Now, I want to go back to what Tyner said, he said that the court has not approved. Let's go back to the history, now let's go to the archival fee, okay? That's the four dollar fee. Back, a law was passed in two thousand and three, in two thousand and four, everything that, that Tyner said is correct, there has to be a public hearing, there needs to be, the county clerk designates the historical records, and there, you know, you have to have it, you post it, and you publish it in the paper, you know, fifteen days in advance where you have the hearing, okay? All the things, requirements need to be done. However, back in two thousand and four, in January of two thousand and four, the, I don't know if any of y'all were on the court at that time, the county commissioners, Ernest Breones, was the county clerk at the time, he brought that in, he suggested it to the court, the court approved it, they approved as a court the four dollar fee back in two thousand and four. Lotta, I have the videos, because I will back to watch, say, what happened with this? Lotta, at the time, told the court, hey, you need to have a public hearing, there's other things you need to follow before you start collecting the fee. However, they just went ahead and started collecting the fee. They collected it, unfortunately, Mr. Breones, he passed away in two thousand and six, Diana Barrera was appointed in two thousand and six, she kept collecting the fee. None of the things that needed to be done were done, not until two thousand and twelve. Now, Lotta, you were, you were the county attorney at the time, so all, through all this time, and you had mentioned, hey, y'all need to do this, this, and this, it was never done, in two thousand and twelve it was done. County clerk at the time, Ms. Barrera, she did what you needed to do, and she had a master plan for all of the, all of the historical records, and she had designated all of the historical records. That doesn't need to be done every year, because historical records are the historical records. She did that, she came up with CoFile and had a great plan. There was, there wasn't another public hearing, another one in two thousand and thirteen, there wasn't one in two thousand and fourteen. She followed along, and not because I disagree with her, but she was doing what is kind of the common practice around clerks with, around the state. Once you designate it, once that fee is set, and again, two thousand and twelve, the four dollar fee was set or adopted again by Commissioners Court at that time, she kept on. Now, when I got into office, I was continuing with the plan, however, I met with Dale, and it was at a deficit, so CoFile was, at that time, they were producing and they were restoring the records faster than we could collect the money. So instead of raising the fee, new in office, trying to kind of figure things out, I didn't raise the fee, I said, hey, let's just put a pause and do, okay, what Barrera did, which was, the county attorney apparently thought it was okay, because not once did she tell her not to, Commissioners Court never said anything, and again, talking to clerks around the state and attack, it's just a common practice, you kind of let it build up again. You're not, you're not spending anything, because of course, you all have to approve it, so nothing was spent, we were just collecting that fee. To let it build up and start along this really great plan, again, that Barrera had come up with, with CoFile, and we were going to then start back on that plan, that was approved by Commissioners Court. It was still in the budget. Well, interestingly enough, in two thousand and eight, when I met for reelection, I get an email or a letter from the county attorney, you need to stop collecting these fees because you haven't done any of this. Well, you're worried about it now, and you're bringing all this up, which I agree with her opinion, but I stopped collecting them, and, but it was interesting, because then my opponent used it, who happens to be her friend, so take what you want from that. But again, it has been budgeted, and I, and I, I disagree with the county attorney on this. Either, obviously, there needs to be a hearing, but I don't need to, I don't believe I need to designate the historical documents, because they've already been designated, right? I mean, they're, they're there, there's plan, and it's a plan for funding, that's what the statute reads.
I think the whole, I think the question here is, what's the problem of doing ten dollars instead of five?
For what? For that one? Well, we can, and y'all, y'all said that one, the archival fee, y'all said that.
Whatever you need it for, I'm just saying, you know, because there is times that you need something, and we have, we have to find money for that.
I agree, but I can't, you can, but you can use it on specific things.
That's okay, but I mean, can we, I mean, the question is, can we do ten instead of five?
If y'all want to, as a court, if you wanted the archival fee, if you want to do that, and then we can get back on with the, with the books and the preserving, absolutely, if y'all want to do that, I.
You're going to need it one time, so might as well be there. You know, I'm just saying, it's, you know.
So, so, anyway, your rendition, your rendition gets us to the point of that the court has before us an item to consider implementation of fees in the office of the county clerk, and it appears that we have the right as a Commissioners Court to adjust the records archive fees to not exceed more than ten dollars per Local Government Code, section 118.025. It probably needs to be noted that there are some items that need to be established, and Lotta's office can assist us with that, knowing that this is important. Archives, we've made a big investment in archives this year as a court, and there are so many documents that need to be archived in the county clerk's as well, and without a, a revenue source, it's going to be very hard for us to, to continue on a pace without seeing, there's some, we're not always going to have the luxury of having a certificate certificates of obligation. So if we're going to continue to, to make archival um, uh, preservation important, I think this fee is necessary. And again, um, there's probably, um, a checklist that needs to um, be brought forth, including those items that Tyner mentioned. With regards to the real property records filing, we can discuss that at a later time, because that would require legislation. And going back to the records management and preservation fee, I just want the court to note that um, I respectfully disagree with the county clerk. Uh, she indicated a year ago, and I have emails to, to show, that we were going to expect that she would raise the five dollars in keeping with twenty twenty um, to be able to have the extra five dollars. I don't know of most urban communities that are dealing with the types of infrastructure that her office needs. She, her office, her office requires and needs an overall infrastructure, which we provide, and in turn, any budgetary increases that she can pro- provide to help her office function in twenty twenty is not only welcome, but appreciated. So it was with a lot of happiness last year when she came to us and said that she could do this, and we expected her to do it, and she didn't do it, and then she asked me for more time, which I gave to her, and then every single month, when we asked for it to be brought forth, there was a, a reason, uh, that it needed to be delayed, and it's what necessitated the agenda item today, is to be able to have that discussion as to what we can do to help our court and the departments and the electeds in our, uh, county to be able to have the maximum revenue, whether it be for records management, records preservation, or records archive. These are all tools that are given to us by the legislature, and when we don't use those tools, we're not helping the county. And um, and I think the records archive fee is before us today as one of the filing fees uh, that can be levied, and so I would ask court to consider um, uh, a records archive fee to uh, be adopted as part of our annual budget as we come into budget, and of course, this goes without saying that it needs the archival plan, it needs the public hearing, and it needs every other I dotted and T crossed that the statute requires. And it sounds like some of it was started back as long ago as two thousand and four, and there's only one um, thing to do, and that's to see what it is that we lack, and to get it um, and, and to get it complete, but it still requires action from our court to initiate that, uh, that fee. And if there's any other questions, um, I want to make sure that the county attorney, in, uh, Lotta, are you in the room, or Belinda? I don't have actually eyes on the other side of the room.
I am, I am, Judge. I am, Judge. Um, ju- you can basically assess the fee today, but you cannot collect it until you have established the plan and also the, uh, the public hearing. So that needs to follow, um, pretty quick after that.
Well, I'm so sorry. I can't really hear you, but I think you're saying you need to-
You gotta have, you gotta have, you can adopt it today, Judge, can you hear him?
Well, it sounds like the clerk said that the plan exists and has been in existence since two thousand and twelve.
She's saying you can adopt it today, but do the plan right away.
Do the plan in the public hearing.
She needs to do it.
In the public hearing right after that.
Yeah, we'll look at that before you start.
That's fine. I mean, I would be supportive of all, all of those actions. If there is a plan, we should bring that forth. If there's no plan, we will have to ask the clerk to create one.
Right.
But just that, no, the plan is for the funding.
For the collection.
Okay, well-
Which is collecting the fee.
For the collection, yes.
Yeah, that's what it says. So we have that, but we have the other plan. Um, you can-
So do your motion or what?
Yeah, there's another fee.
Can I ask a question? Um, I'm, I'm for doing the fee. I think it's a good idea if you need it, and it'll help, but as, as respect for you, because it is your office.
Right.
Are you for us doing this?
The archival, that's for y'all, and they keep-
You tend not, but you're, you're supportive.
If that's we need to speed up this process, I'm fine with that. I do want to say, though, I do respectfully disagree with the county judge. I don't appreciate you using your office to talk down, spread falsehoods, and completely disrespecting me in my office. It's rude, and it's condescending, and that does not give you a right to act that way to people. Show me those emails. It was a miscommunication, and that's what it was. And everything that you said about stringing out is simply not true. And I think everyone that's ever worked with me knows my integrity, and I keep my word, and I don't play games. So if there's a miscommunication, again, like I sent you an email and said, hey, I apologize for the miscommunication. But, like, you know, and Tyner. Tyner knows this, but you also, aside from that, I want to say that you can collect a records technology and infrastructure fee. Y'all will, y'all can set that, and it's two dollars. And my, and again, my office runs well.
It's the max?
Yes, two dollars. It's a completely different fee. I don't know why Tyner didn't give that to you, but it's another fee on here, that y'all can collect. Collecting that.
The records technology, infrastructure fee? Is that the records?
Did y'all have? No, 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 it's another fee, but we're not. It's not in the two dollars. We're not, at least in my office. We don't, there's no assessment of a two dollar fee.
We need to look into that.
Excuse me, if I may, um, in one eighteen point oh one one, there, there is a long list of fees, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Tyner, Tyner, those are set by the legislature. We collect those.
If you look at one eighteen point oh one one, I was not going to go over the twelve fees that are listed there.
No, 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 because those are set by the legislature. We're already collecting those.
Um, information that I got came from the judge, and so I was looking for uh, um, a, a, a fee that was not being charged at the ten dollar rate, and that's what I located. I located with the assistance of the county attorney's office, um, like I mentioned, one eighteen point oh two one six. County clerk, it allows a ten dollar fee, but it's being collected at the rate of five dollars.
Because it works.
And again, that's two hundred and ninety thousand annually. And then the other fee um, that, you know, appeared could, that could be set by Commissioner's Court, is the records archive fee, one eighteen point oh two five, and that one is not more than ten dollars.
And then there's F two, records technology and infrastructure fee.
Um, I asked, um, um, if anybody knew whether or not that was budgeted, and it was um, told to me that the records archive fee was not budgeted, that's why I just wanted to get it on the agenda um, to talk about it, because the court's in budget right now, and just like with Ann Lorenson and the district clerk, if a fee was going to be set, it's got to be c- clear that it's in the budget. And it was indicated to me that it, that it was not, and it, you know, if Dale is in, in the courtroom, um, you know, the county auditor would know whether or not that records archive fee is actually budgeted. If, if it is budgeted, I stand corrected.
Stating that it, it is budgeted.
He said it is budgeted.
Okay, thank you. I, I did not hear that. Is, is it, is it budgeted at the two hundred and ninety thousand dollar range, or it, what is budget for that?
Ninety.
Okay, thank you very much. I stand corrected.
But again, you can still collect.
Five more.
No, well, well, I'm talking about a different fee now.
So, so what I'm going to do is, uh, we're going to call the question, and uh, I'll put it on for the next agenda, so that the county clerk can come and share any other fees, make any presentation that she thinks is available, and um, and that she thinks that, uh, should be advanced. And I will also bring forward, uh, the information, uh, to her office, so that she can see that, uh, that indeed that we were expecting an increase based on her word.
So you want to table, you want to table this one?
Three thousand dollars to our budget, and I know that that's the fact, because um, it was conveyed to us.
You want to table this, Judge?
Not to me individually, but uh, but that's fine. People, uh, want to, um-
Judge, you want to table it? You want to make a motion on it?
Well, we're going to make the motion to um, to discuss the um, the records archive fee, and, and see what the will of the court is on that. The, the motion would be to that the county Commissioner's Court would adopt the records archive fee, and then, of course, it's up to us to see what dollar amount. It cannot exceed more than ten dollars. And um, and it would be subject to all of the county attorney's requirements as she understands the statute for the county. So that means the public hearing is required, or additional documentation for the plan, whatever is required.
So move for ten dollars.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Judge, I'm going to abstain because I missed the discussion only. I apologize. I just got back on.
That's not a problem. We, we've got you on record as abstention. And um, and we'll do more follow up on it, okay? And so, um, we've got, uh, that's, we're done with number three, and um, number four is next on the agenda, and it's reviewing the calculations of our rates, and this is kind of a leftover, or, and it really, we started the discussion yesterday, but now we're going to get into more details to receive these calculations from Dale, so I'm going to kind of let him take over. But first, give everybody a chance. Give Brent a chance to get his notebook out, and um, we're going to go over the several rates. One, the first one is the no new revenue tax rate. You'll remember that that's the new terminology, for those of you watching on court, all the new words that we have now in two thousand and twenty. Uh, this used to be called the effective rate, and then the voter approval tax rate used to be called the rollback rate. And then we're also going to be looking at fund balances today, and even though we kind of glossed over it, it's important today to talk about the hospital district and the farm to market, as well as our own county. So, I'm going to get my, my papers out, and then Dale, would you help, uh, take us through these calculations? And I just need to-
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. This is my phone.
And don't forget to use a, a good mic, so that we can hear you. And if you would let us know by the letter, like P five or K one, whichever, whatever we're going to start with, so we can all get ready. Or if there are the new ones you e- if you've emailed new ones to us.
Judge, Judge, when there's an appropriate time to open public comment up, I can give kind of a quick recap of what I just did, uh, for the court and for the public, so whenever you want to do that, I just would appreciate the opportunity.
Judge, we can let Commissioner do the update real quick for this, till we get all the technology. Teresa's looking for the, uh, the values on, because this was provided in, in court, so if we, we let Commissioner Chastity, I do a little quick update, then we can continue on this.
Uh, uh, that, that's okay with the judge. That's, I'm, I'm fine waiting also.
I was going to put it when we do Jacob's engineering, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
It's, uh, item P two. I'm sorry, B is in Barbara, B two.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the calculation of our, 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 our valuations for our tax rates for the general fund, our foreign to market and that road, as well as our hospital district. As you said, Senate Bill, uh, last legislative session did change a lot of our terminology. As you stated, we now have a no new revenue tax, as you said, which is now, which was the effective tax rate, and the voter approved rate, which was the rollback rate. The county is under Senate Bill two, where we now have a rollback rate, or no new, voter approved rate of three and a half percent. However, in the emergency situation in which we are in, the court has allowed us to calculate only a rate of, uh, as a special taxing unit, which will be calculating a rate up to eight percent. Now, this is just calculations only for, for values to, should they determine them. We're going to go over P three in, in the book you have. That is our general fund tax rate calculation. Showing your evaluations that we, that were from prior year of two thousand and nineteen. They were thirty one billion, nine hundred and three million, one hundred and thirty six thousand, seven hundred and seventy two dollars. The property currently under protest is one billion, four hundred and one million, six hundred and seventy eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty four dollars. Railroad, which is our, our, our infrastructure of the railroads we have here, as well as the, uh, cars and the material they carry, is valued at eleven million, four hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. The county does have a ceiling on several of our tax properties, and, and that ceiling is a negative one billion, nine hundred and eighteen million, one hundred, zero, thirty six thousand, six hundred and thirty four dollars. So our net taxable value is thirty one billion, three hundred and ninety eight million, one hundred and eighty nine thousand, five hundred and fourteen. We currently do participate in three different tax increment financing zones. Those are Pottery Island Zone, Downtown Management Zone, and this one was just created recently, where, where the North, North Beach. The North Beach has no effect at this point, because the, the, we're just establishing the, the beginning balances of that, of that zone. So the balance we show here is a negative fif- five hundred and thirty seven million, three hundred and seventy four thousand, six hundred and fifty one is the value of the Pottery Island Tiff, as well as the downtown zone. When we subtract that value out, our total taxable value, which we calculate our values are, is thirty billion, eight hundred and sixty million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, eight sixty three. Now, to be able to calculate the current no new revenue tax rate, we have to pull out new property, so that the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty are, are using the same property that was in existence. We do that by subtracting out the new property of eight hundred and eighty six million, two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and fifty one dollars, four hundred and fifty nine dollars, which gives us a adjusted taxable value of twenty nine billion, nine hundred and seventy four thousand, six hundred and four thousand, four hundred and four dollars. Last year's levy, which was last year's taxes, this includes our debt service for the general fund, was eighty nine bil- eighty nine million, one hundred and seventy five thousand, and eighty one dollars. When we do our taxing, and we do our calculations for that, that gives us a no new revenue tax rate, a point two nine seven five zero two for the general fund. When we do this one, is at a, the eight percent. The eight percent is the maximum approved rate, which was allowed to be calculated, and we will give you both the three and a half in, in a second. And that's point three two one four one eight. Now, we did the same calculations for the foreign to market and the hospital districts. I'm not going to go through all the values, because they're very similar, but I will give you the tax rates on P four. P four is our foreign to market tax rate values. If you look at the very bottom, you'll see our no new revenue tax rate for the road fund is point zero zero three seven six nine, and the voter approved rate is point zero zero four one zero zero. If you go to, now the balance is on P five, you'll see the hospital district. Hospital district doesn't have any, any, any free ceilings to it as well, and, and not participating in the same number of tests we have, so there's small differences there, but not significant. The no new revenue tax rate for the hospital district is point one zero eight five six seven. And since the tax, since the hospital district is a special taxing unit, they are allowed to go the full eight percent. There is no three and a half percent requirement for the hospital district. So the hospital district's voter approved rate is point one one eight zero one four. Now, to summarize this up, let's go to P, P two. P two, P two shows us our, our tax rate calculations that we've had through, through the years. So if you look at the far left side of the column, you'll see what our adopted rates were for last fiscal year. Those being the general fund point two six five five six three, the debt service point zero four two one two six, and the road fund point zero zero three eight nine nine, for a total adopted rate for prior year of point three one one five eight eight. As I said, we're going to do your no new revenue tax rate, which is effectively your, your effective rate. We have a no new tax rate for the general fund of point two five eight six zero four. Debt service point zero three eight eight nine eight, and our road fund is point zero zero three seven six nine for combined no new revenue tax rate of point three zero one two seven one. Now, if we go for the calculations at a three and a half percent tax rate, as Senate Bill two allows, our general fund is point two six seven six five five. Debt service was, we're, we're, we're going to use a point four, point zero four two one two six, which was a prior tax year. We have a, a slide that, that does use a little bit of our fund balance, and we- We have a, a slide that, that does use a little bit of our fund balance, and we will go to, that may, may change, but for right now, that's the number we're going to be using. And our road fund is point zero-zero-three-nine-two-nine, for a total voter-approved tax rate at three and a half percent above the no new revenue tax, point three-one-three-seven-one-zero. For calculation purposes allowed, we, we did do the eight percent, should, should we need the, this calculation. For the general fund, the voter-approved at the eight percent is point two-seven-nine-two-nine-two. Again, our debt service is point zero-four-two-one-two-six, our road fund point zero-zero-four-one-zero-zero, for a maximum total voter-approved tax rate of point three-two-five-five-one-eight. If you look to the center of the bo- bottom of the page, you'll see our hospital district. Our hospital district for 2019, 2020 adopted rate was point one-one-two-four-two-one. As we stated before, the no new revenue tax rate is point one-zero-eight-five-six-seven, and our voter-approved rate is point one-one-eight-zero-one-four. And these are the numbers we will be using in our, our, our budget workshops for, for our rates, to be able to determine what our values are. Now, Teresa, I did email you a copy of our, our fund balance, I don't know if you received it.
So sorry, no.
For our fund balances, these are estimated as of the end of this fiscal year. We're estimating the general fund as a, a fund balance of twenty-four million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. Our road fund of two million, two hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars. Our fairgrounds, two million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars. Our law library, seventy-four thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars. Our airport fund, hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars. Our inland parks, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Our coastal parks, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight thirty-six. And for, for the information we have now, the debt service, three million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars, for a total operating fund balance of thirty-four million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-two. That's the balances I have for our fund balance, and our calculations of our, our tax rates for our no new revenue tax, and our voter-approved, uh, tax. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Dale, the last number is the one that, the only one I missed. After coastal parks, what was the last one?
Debt service.
Yeah, what was that number?
Let me get that for you. Debt service was three million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-one. And that gives us a tot- total operating thirty-four million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, four seventy-two.
Okay. And just to remind the court, the fund balance on the gen- uh, the twenty-four million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy represents, uh, approximately what percentage?
That right now would be twenty-four point three percent of our, our budget revenue for, for 2019, two thousand, two thousand and twenty, and that's a one point five million dollars increase from our 2019 fund balance.
Okay. All right. And, uh, and of course, just to remind the audience who's watching us today, yesterday in Budget Workshop, we also had the opportunity to go over those very same calculations. Uh, and we also asked the auditor to help us, um, uh, look at a variety of options, and we're going to present those to the court very soon, right, Dale? Are you going to get those to us?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, we have, we have several coming to you, uh, we're going to probably give you a, a lot more than you want, but we'll give you a lot more.
You might want to go over, uh, also what it would be if you kept the same tax rate? The one that you did, I think it's on P, let me see. It's, it represents a two-point, I believe...
Two point six-nine percent increase of the, by the, uh, 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 of...
What, what number is that on? That might be number, or what, what, uh, page?
P6, I believe, correct, yes.
P6.
I don't have the book, my book's missing, but it's, but it's P6.
Okay, just, it might be worthy of, of talking about that one, if you kept the exact same tax rate.
That would be the exact same tax rate, that's, that's correct.
But can I just ask, this one, real, I'm sorry, Judge, do you mean to interrupt?
No, I just want to say, uh, hold, hold that thought, Dale, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, I, my understanding today is, this is, Dale, this is what you have to do by law, we have to receive your calculations, and by law, we have to receive the calculations of the no new revenue, the voter approval, and these fund balances, right? We're not voting on any tax increase, or we're not advocating...
That's right.
That is correct, all you are, you are, you are receiving the, the balances as of, of requirement of ta- the Tax Code twenty-six point oh-five, I believe that's correct. Uh, I know it's the Tax Code twenty-six, that you must receive the evaluations of our no new revenue tax, as well as our voter-approved rate, and our values, so you know where we'd start at, there, this is, we are not voting on a rate today. Thank you.
Using the nineteen twenty, adopted tax rate is P7.
P7, okay, I just want to make sure, commissioners, take a look at that.
Now, Judge, just so, uh, just so everyone that, that's on, online now, are, are viewing this, this book that we're talking about is online, and on the website, under the county's website, in the auditors section, under county workbook, this, all this information is available there.
Okay, thank you, Dale, this is receive only. Are there any questions for Dale with regards to the receipt of the calculations for those categories? Okay, thank you, Dale, and we look forward to getting more of the paperwork, and it goes without saying, we want to thank you and the staff. It's a lot of work, and, um, this is the heavy lift every year, and there's a lot going on. Uh, I know I asked you to help me create calculations that we needed for a grant, and, um, so, the work never ends this time of year, so it's our chance to tell you publicly that this, uh, is not only, we know it's your job, but it's how you do your job that we're praising. And what I really like is that we've modernized, and when we came in last year and asked to produce that fiscal brief, um, you guys took it, ran with it, and expanded it. And I know a lot of that's under the direction of a day, and so, again, all the things that you see are a result of, of modernization and our new OpenGov, uh, software, it's just, it's just really fantastic, so. Investments do pay dividends. Okay, what, uh, where should we go? Let's go to number three, I'm sorry, number three, number five. It's the discuss and consider approval, I'm moving on, everybody, because I didn't hear any more questions, but is that correct, Teresa? No questions from the audience?
That's correct.
From the commissioners?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so number five, uh, in the regular agenda, is discuss and consider approval of overtime pursuant to county policy for exempt employees, and I just want to make sure that this is relating to COVID-19 or Hurricane Hannah.
There are both.
And I want to make sure that, that Dale, um, there are, I know, some overtime that will be submitted from exempt employees for Hurricane Hannah, and it's part of our comprehensive disaster finance policy, and we need to bring it to court, and so, at this time, I don't know if Dale would, would address this, but, um, uh, this is an important issue for our employees. The reason we changed the policy was because we heard from them when we came in last year that things had not gone well, uh, after Hurricane Harvey with regards to this particular item, and we were not eligible for FEMA public assistance as a result. We made the change in policy, here we are again, as they say, here we go again, with another hurricane, and, um, it's very important to note that we do have the right policies in place, and we do have the mechanism to trigger a FEMA reimbursement to the tune of seventy-five percent. So, Dale, do you want to take it from there?
I have a question, Dale, on this, uh, overtime, can we split that?
We do.
Which is which?
I got both.
Okay, can you give me the total on both?
Yes.
What's the total on one of them?
Well, let's go over the, the situation, we currently under two emergency situations, that being COVID-19, this is going on the, for three or four months, and we just recently had Hurricane Harvey, which were in the first fifteen to twenty days, which requires us to pay exempt employees for that. So let's go to, uh, let's go to COVID-19, which is the first one we have for, for, uh, some expenses. We've had some, uh, large amount of testing that we have, and as we did in the past, uh, court, we've already included a few departments in this request for COVID-19, because those that are doing the, the majority of the work, inland parks, emergency management, and a few of the, with Rebecca and social services. We have a total number of eighty-two point seven-nine hours total for all three combined. A total for inland parks is two, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Social services for Rebecca is two hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents, and for Melissa and emergency management, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. So we're asking for whether you would, would like to, uh, approve the overtime for these four employ- employees at a total cost of four thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. And that's for COVID-19.
And then, can you go over Hannah?
Yes, ma'am. As we know, we just recently got Hurricane Hannah. Right now, we're still working on the calculations of cost. We've got several, uh, exempt employees at this point in time, because we have several that were working on this. Uh, several in, in, uh, each department, inland parks, coastal parks, building maintenance, our IT department, our, our, uh, county attorney's office, our social services, a lot of them had some, some participation, there's, uh, right at twenty employees I see here. It's thirty-four point seven-five hours, for a total cost currently of four thousand six hundred and seventy, eighty-seven dollars, for Hurricane Hannah, and that will, that
I'm sorry, re- repeat it once more, Dale, for me?
Four thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Four-six-eighty-seven.
Yes.
Got it, okay.
And the only thing, this definitely will be paid for Hurricane Hannah, because we're still down the, the first fifteen, or, or, or number of days as required by the policy. They just were asking for whether we, the, the funding for the, the COVID-19, which was at four thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. The balances for Hurricane Hannah at four thousand, six eighty-seven will be paid, we're just requesting whether you want to do the same payment for COVID-19.
So, um, so as you can see, um, two disasters at once makes for a lot of, uh, situation reports, a lot of allocation, accounting, um, uh, work, but our team is doing it very effectively, and, um, by doing all of that, uh, work, it gives us an opportunity to get reimbursed. And so I would ask that, uh, the approval of these two matters, um, be made, and I'll make the motion, and I would look for a second, and then there can be further discussion or questions of Dale at this time. Okay, and, uh, are there any other questions of Dale? Just so you know, you're getting two reports every day from Dale on your burn rate, if you ever have any issues or, uh, questions, just remember, those tabs are amazing, you look at it, you look at, when you open up the Excel spreadsheet, it's a very small summary, but if you'll go up to the tabs, behind that is all the backup documentation, so if you ever wonder what these numbers, how they're formulated, just know that all the backup documentation is in your tabs. And in fact, I've been sending these burn rates to our legislative delegation, so that they can understand where Noises County is, and, and, uh, and so we, we, we're keeping up with both disasters at once. So, I spent a little time to make sure there were no questions, but hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Is this for both, or separate?
I'm so sorry?
It's for both.
It's for both, COVID and current Hurricane Hannah.
I like, I, I want to vote for one yes and one no.
Okay, so let's take them individually in that case, Commissioner. Um, uh, let's take the way it's listed, COVID-19 first, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And all those opposed?
Both.
No.
Two noes? Okay, and, um, Hurricane Hannah, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, um... So the motions carry on both, is that correct, Teresa?
I'm sorry, Judge?
The motions carry on both, I just, I'm not able to hear as well as everybody else.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. So now, we're going to move into, and I'm not sure if he's virtual, uh, with us this morning, but if not, I'm certain that we have a way to, um, get us updated into Public Works, B1, we'll get Juan ready, uh, virtually, if he's available.
Hey, Judge, Commissioners, good morning, can you hear me?
Yeah, good morning, Juan, I miss seeing everybody, it's terrible.
Yes, ma'am.
I miss all my, I miss all the guys and girls, and it's, it feels like an eternity, you know? So glad to see you, Juan, and, um, take us through Amanda Lane, you got some really good comments this morning on public comment, I'm not sure if you heard, but I wrote down, you had three people that were supporting this effort, so tell us about Amanda Lane and Stonegate subdivision, and this road.
Yes, ma'am, I, I have a presentation on it, I hope I do this right, um, I'm going to switch my, um, let me see here real quick.
Share your screen.
So we need to share, share the screen with Juan and somebody?
I'm just trying to do that real quick. Oh, here you go.
I have mine.
Can y'all see, can y'all see my screen?
Not yet.
How about now?
I can.
Can y'all see, can y'all see the presentation for Stonegate subdivision?
No.
I see an iPad five.
Uh, let me see, okay, start, zoom, Starbucks. Okay.
There you go.
It says it's bar- there, you got it?
It's not on yet, but it's going to, now you can click on it, there you go.
There you go, good job.
Good morning. Uh, Com- Commissioners, uh, Judge and Commissioner, um, this is a subdivision that was, um, it started back in twenty fifteen, um, um, Stonegate subdivision, which, um, it's only one road in this, in the subdivision, it's, and I'll go to the next, all right, go to the next screen. Let me see here real quick. All right, let me do it this way. Can y'all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. This is an aerial photo of the, of the subdivision, uh, Amanda Lane is the one on the bottom, uh, of the area. It's, 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 uh, it's on eighteen eighty-nine in Amanda Lane. Uh, the subdivision is pretty much a straight road, um, and it has a dead end, it has a dead end. Uh, like I said, it, it, the subdivision was back in twenty fifteen, uh, and then going to the next one, this is the, uh, stormwater quality management plan for, for that subdivision. Everything on that subdivision drains, I'm going to talk a little bit about the drainage, everything drains from the west of the subdivision, and it drains east to eighteen eighty-nine, um, both, uh, are roadside ditches, um, that drain to eighteen eighty-nine and drain out to, uh, the way this was designed was to drain towards the northwest of the subdivision on eighteen eighty-nine. The, uh, engineer was, was Ronald Boss, the developer was Ronald Boss, um, the plat is in the ETJ, and the plat was administered by the city, uh, back then. The final plat was approved by Planning Commission on October twenty-fifth of twenty fifteen, and the construction agreement with Noises County was done back in December second of twenty fifteen, and the final plat record, record was, uh, recorded on December the fourth of twenty fifteen. The, uh, final, uh, plans were never submitted to the, from the city to the county, so we never received a final set of plans for review, for review. And talking to my staff, we never received them, nor do we have files, uh, those documents in our files. This are, this is a picture, uh, looking east on Amanda Lane is the one on the left-hand side. This is at the intersection of, of Amanda Lane and eighteen eighty-nine, and then, um, the picture on the right is, uh, looking west on Amanda Lane, and that's at the cul-de-sac, at the end of the subdivision. Uh, it is a nice subdivision, uh, there aren't, uh, nice houses out there. One thing that I did want to talk about this subdivision, Judge and Commissioner, is that the drainage issues that this subdivision has, um, these, the, there's drainage issues because, um, as I mentioned at the beginning, everything drains from the west towards the east, and, uh, as you can see on the left-hand side of the, of the exhibit, there's these driveways that were installed, and, and I've never seen anything like this, uh, they were installed, and they, they, they follow the profile of the existing ditch. And if you look at the one on the bottom si- on the bottom, uh, there are several of these, um, driveways that, that are like this. The one to the right is, is a, is a pretty much a, a perfect installation of a, of a driveway with a covert, and the driveways cross over. So that's going to give you an illustration, about fifty percent of the driveways are installed, uh, with, with water, low water crossings, and then probably about maybe thirty to forty percent are installed with, uh, with coverts. I do want to mention that some of these coverts out there... I do wanna mention that some of these coverts out there are pretty much coverts that aren't approved by the county. Um, and what I mean by that is that the, the one to the right is an RCP covert, a reinforced concrete pipe. Uh, there's pipes out there that, that vary from plastic PVC to corrugated metal pipe. And I just wanna show you another illustration. Um, the one to the left is, is pretty much a brand new driveway that's been installed. It looks like a brand new driveway. Uh, took a picture of it. This is a picture, a recent picture from yesterday. Um, as you can see that some of the waters just stands, um, before the coverts. And if you see far, I'm talking about the picture to the left. If you see the, the, the far end between the two driveways, it does it like a horseshoe. All that area is filled with, with, uh, with, uh, just material. Uh, I guess whenever they were grading the, the site, they just left the material in, in the ditch and that's the reason why you have that water standing, um, there in this covert. And then, uh, to the right, you see the, um, low water crossings where you start having vegetation growth. Uh, you start seeing some of the, uh, it's starting to look more like a little wetlands area. I mean, I don't, I don't wanna say that, but it's starting to look more like a little wetlands area. And, and those are due to those low water crossing, co, um, low water crossing driveways. Going back Judge and Commissioners is that the subdivision was never accepted by, by the county. The road maintenance was never accepted by the county. One thing that this subdivision has, I'm gonna go back to the area. If you look to the area, um, on the south end of this, the, on the, the bottom part of this, uh, subdivision, there's a new subdivision. It's called Stonegate Unit Two and it's being developed, uh, by another developer. There's, there is a tying point to Amanda Lane. Um, if you, in the middle of this Amanda Lane, there's an interconnecting that the, uh, that the developer is tying, the new developer is tying into Amanda Lane. And, uh, the road right now, as it stands of Amanda Lane, is it is not, it's a public road, but it's not being maintained by the county. The, the, the plans and the, and the, the plat, uh, the preliminary plats have been approved and they're already starting construction on the new subdivision of Stonegate Unit Two. And that's the reason why the citizens have concern about that now that new subdivision is gonna be tied into their road, which is a public access road, but the maintenance of it is not being maintained by us, by the county. I was gonna recommend, and I am gonna recommend to Commissioners Court and, and Belinda, let me know if I, if, if I can do this or not, but, um, I do wanna recommend that we maintain the road with the condition that we not accept the drainage of this, uh, subdivision. And the only reason I'm saying that, Judge and Commissioners, is because of the issues surrounding, um, the subdivision. And the, and the, and the only reason I'm kinda recommending Commissioners is because of that new subdivision that's tying into a, a public road that's not being maintained. So that's my reason for a recommendation.
Is this also part of the city one?
Commissioner, um, this is in the ETJ, in the extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Sure.
Uh, the city, the city, uh, is the one that administers the plats. And they're the ones that review the plats. Of course, they, they submit them to us for us to review. Uh, and we make our comments and we submit those back to the city. Uh, but at the end of the day, the, the city is the one that administers the, the plating process of the subdivision because it's in the ETJ.
May I make a comment?
Yeah, yes ma'am.
We have been working with the citizens out there since I took office and this is a prime example of why the city, the county and Tech Dot should communicate. This is not fair to those citizens out there. This should not have been approved like it was by the city with that developer. He did a really shoddy job and that's the truth of protecting their drainage. And now you have a new subdivision coming in there that thank goodness Juan is working with the city on that. They've included and we've had meetings with that. But in two thousand fifteen, this was just overlooked and I don't know if the county was asleep at the wheel. I don't know if the city didn't give it to them. I don't know. But I just think we have to fix that road because if we don't fix that road, you have beautiful homes in there and we don't want it to become looking like the roads that some of the colonias unfortunately look because we haven't been able to take care of those because they were never approved. And this is a, this is two thousand fifteen, so it's still in decent shape, isn't it Juan? It just needs some repair.
Yes ma'am, and I was gonna make that comment, Commissioner. The, the roads out there are, the, Amanda Lane is in good shape. Uh, of course, there's a couple of potholes that are on the road, but other than that, the, the road's in good condition.
When you say maintain, you mean, uh, is there anything else we gotta do to the road other than this? I mean, do you have to, I, I see where there's no curb and gutter, there's no, uh, sidewalks, there's nothing out there, so.
No, no sir. If you look at the, going back to these photos, if you look at it, it's all, um, drainage, uh, it's all roadside ditches. Of course Commissioner, a, and it's kinda like I, I mentioned earlier is that, you know, some of these driveways, uh, are, were installed kinda like, and I call, we call them ro, uh, low water crossings. And, um, I've never seen driveways like that where, where that's being permitted. We don't accept it at Noises, at the county. Uh, we request that you install coverts, reinforced concrete pipes. You know, some of these constituents, when it's raining, they drive over those driveways and pretty much they're driving over the water.
But the developer, the developer told them they could do it, correct?
That, that is correct. We've talked to the constituents out there. Uh, they've told us that during the construction process of the, of the houses and, and the roads that, that the developer approved these type of, uh, low water cross, low water cross driveways, um, which I'm not sure how, why that was accepted, but, um, that shouldn't have, to me, that should never have been accepted. Um, as I mentioned, the road, the roads are in good condition. Um, and, and I would probably, I would recommend that we accept just the maintenance of the roads. Um, it's kinda like we, I talked to the constituents out there. Uh, they do have drainage issues. And, uh, and, and it's, and some of it's because of those low water crossing driveways. And then, and I just kinda wanna bring this up, Judge and Commissioners, is that this, this is one of the reasons why now with the new subdivisions that are coming out, we are requesting that the new developers either mitigate the runoff between the pre-imposed conditions, uh, either by detention or retention or some other form that they can detain some of their water within their subdivisions or improvements. And, and I think this was just something that was designed to drain from one end to the other. And, um, that's the reason why, looking at the area, let me go back to the area. Well, looking at this drawing, in the stormwater quality plan, I mean, it's all draining from, from, from the drawing, it's all draining from left to right. And, and pretty much all the water stands and accumulates at the intersection of Amanda Lane and, and, uh, and eighteen eighty-nine.
But Juan, isn't Tech Dot in there a plan to do some things to eighteen eighty-nine that will eventually address the drainage?
They have some, uh, they, they have it in their, in their, in their, uh, in their, in their program to, to do some improvements on eighteen eighty-nine. And this is probably something that we can kinda coordinate with, uh, with Tech Dot and see how we can improve or how they can improve some of that drainage.
Well, but the thing, the problem is it's gonna be the inside, you know? And you can, you can fix the corners, but what's gonna happen to the inside? How's it gonna flow? You know, I, I think the developer needs to be held accountable for that, Juan. Uh, you know, file a lawsuit or whatever so we can get our money back that we're gonna spend. But I think also Juan, i- is the city, I mean, they got potable water, right? I mean, they got good water, they got.
The, 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 the one providing the water to this subdivision is the Water District Number Three, which is the, the Rockstone Water District Number Three, Commissioner.
I mean, they, they're kinda in the middle of this. I mean, they've tried everything and their developer is not going to help them. And way back then, I think we should have been involved in whoever was here, which I know who it was. And Boss is the developer and Glenn Sullivan was here and obviously we didn't do enough to help. We didn't stay in contact and thank goodness that's changed, but we just cannot leave them out to dry right now. I think the least we can do is try and take care of that road. If not, it's gonna start looking really shoddy. It's in a great part of, of Cal Allen Northwest part. And I don't think we should leave that road like that. It's just gonna get worse.
And I, and I agree with you Commissioner, but I'm just saying, where do we stop? You do the road, we're gonna take, you know, maintain the road, then all of a sudden say, wait a minute. They're gonna call, they're gonna be calling you for the drainage too. You know, they're gonna be calling you for the, uh, for the driveway. They're gonna be calling you for.
Well, I think Juan's, in this right here, I think he's saying that we're not gonna be doing that. We're just going to take the road.
Okay, uh, Juan, just to be clear, this is Laura Jimenez, um, county attorney. Um, just to be clear, Juan, are you saying just the road? Doesn't it have the road drainage?
Yeah, yes ma'am, and, and that's the reason why I, I pointed that out. Laura, is there a way that we can just accept the road and not the drainage?
No, it comes, it, and you need both. You need both.
What's that Laura?
You need both. You need the road Eastman and, uh, the road drainage Eastman.
That's the package, Miss ma'am. Wait, you're saying we, we have to accept both to accept one Laura? Is that what you said?
Correct, correct.
Okay Juan, so what's the answer here? What's our alternative so that we can help them?
I mean.
Well, one, one idea here is that Boss Engineering is still in business. I just looked them up and they have a twenty twenty website. Maybe we can call them in and, uh, and see if maybe we can work with them. If we offer to do the road, if they will, is there a way to remedy drainage, do you think, uh, from an engineering perspective now that everything's already in without tearing up those, uh, driveways?
Judge, in look, in, in looking at the, the, the layout, the, the way it's draining, um, you would either have to create some type of, uh, of, of detention or retention on the upstream side of this subdivision or within some of those properties, uh, to alleviate some of the drainage issues that they're having there at the intersection of, uh, eighteen eighty-nine and Amanda Lane. I, I've been out there when, and Commissioners have been out there when we've had heavy rain events or any, any rain event and that intersection just gets inundated with, uh, with water.
And, and the real problem is, once, once this has been accepted, my understanding is, then it's, you know, so someone accepted this, right? The city or, I didn't quite understand Juan, you're saying it never came to us?
County never accepted it.
But, but how did the city, did he approve this? They had to approve the plat, right?
Yes sir, the, the plat was plotted back in, let me see real quick. The final plat was, was plotted or recorded back in December fourth of twenty fifteen. And, and based my, my understanding from, from my staff is that the, the city approved the, uh, the plans or, or the, the plating for this process.
So, I mean, maybe we have to bring the city, because, I mean, if the, if an engineer, my understanding is if an engineer submits and the city approves, then that's kind of it, right? I mean.
Well, they probably approved what he did. And he didn't, they probably approved whatever his plan was and I don't believe the plan had anything in there with drainage, did it Juan? Or if it did, it didn't work.
Yes.
Well, it didn't work what he did.
Going back to the, uh, stormwater quality management plan, uh, they show everything draining from, from left to right or what I'm calling from, from west to east. And then it's draining to Tech Dot right away and then training to the northwest of the subdivision.
Juan, with this, how, how will this affect the subdivision coming up? I mean.
Well, the, that subdivision Commissioners has already been approved by, by the city also. And that one's already starting, they already started construction on it.
No, I'm talking the drainage, the drainage.
That one's moving.
I'm talking about the drainage from this subdivision. If it floods or whatever, how will it affect the subdivision next door?
Uh, when, when we reviewed the subdivision for the, the next door, Commissioner, we were calling it, it went to the south. Uh, we looked at their drainage plan. Uh, the engineer that's designing, that designed that subdivision, uh, they, they created a detention pond for under-year storm per our request. So they have detention for their, for their subdivision, Commissioner.
Is there, is there room to do a deten, retention pond in, in that subdivision?
Yes sir, they're doing a hundred-year detention.
No, no, is there a room to do one?
Um, where Amanda Lane is.
Amanda Lane is?
Uh, for Amanda Lane, Commissioner, uh, I think all the lots are sold for Amanda Lane. Uh, I'm not sure those two lots, I'm going back to the area. I'm not sure those two lots are still available. Um, if those, if there's lots available, then there's, there's, there should be some area for, for detention. But that'll be part of the developer, whoever owns those pieces of property.
Well, why don't I give them to, to us if we're gonna work on it?
I mean, sh- should we get some sort of cost analysis of what we think this drainage fix is gonna be?
Juan, what are you thinking?
Uh, I'm thinking, I mean, I would need to look at it, um, I would to, I would need to, uh, analyze it and, and, and determine wh- what's the best way to alleviate some of that drainage. You know, if, if you do a detention pond on the west side of the subdivision on the upstream side, maybe it'll alleviate some of that drainage that's coming off, off, off of the fields and, and detain it off, off, off the subdivision. Uh, and then if there's any properties that are left, then maybe we can do some type of detention in that area.
Have you, have you ever tel, spoken to Boss? I know we were trying to get him and we never could get him.
Well, we, we did bring him in, uh, into the office and this was about a year ago, Commissioner. Uh, and I think one of, one of his, uh, it might have been one of his brother, somebody came in and talked to us. And, uh, and, and we, we, we didn't get far with them.
There was not a good response.
No ma'am.
Um, Commissioners, I have, um, we have a comment on this particular agenda item in our Zoom, um, virtual, uh, platform and it's from Jose Pareda again. Can we recognize him, Tyner, at this time so he can provide some, some information to the court?
Thank you Judge. Uh, I just wanted to echo some of the comments that have been made by Commissioners and, and Juan. Uh, that's correct that when we did, when we first built and we did the drainage, uh, on the ditches and the driveways, we were instructed by Boss that they had to be those dips in the driveway for the drainage. My builder was actually installing the coverts the correct way, uh, that they should be done. And we got a stop order from Boss and we got the email saying, that's not approved, coverts are not approved. It has to be this way and this is the way it's gonna be. So that's the, that's the reason a lot of them are like that. Not because we wanted them like that, because the developer told us that's the way they had to be. So that's the reasoning for the drainage issues. Uh, the other problem that we're seeing is with this new development to the south of us that Juan was talking about, Stonegate Two, that's correct that they do have a drainage system and they do have that retention pond, which is full right now due to the recent rains. But what we did notice is they're already building up their lands and so we're gonna get, we're still gonna have drainage issues even worse because of that new subdivision that's been approved. And it's gonna create more issues. And if you come down our road right now, you can see how they've built their land, uh, up higher and they're bringing in truckloads of dirt to build higher and that's just gonna make things a lot worse and, uh, than what they are now, unfortunately. So I just wanted to kinda clarify that, uh, of why we have those low line, low line crossings. That it wasn't because the owners wanted it, it was because of the developer. And we have also reached out to the developer. There's thirty-two, uh, home sites on the street and nobody's had luck. We've gone by their offices, we've sent certified mail and whatnot. So, uh, we're kind of stuck in the middle, but we don't know what to do and that's why we've, uh, come to the Commissioners Court and we've gone to Commissioner Vaughn and thank you Commissioner Vaughn for helping us and, and being our voice there on the court as well. And we're just trying to find some help from the county since this is a public roadway.
Yeah, I gotta, I have a question for county attorney. Uh, and we wanna help these people and we, but we probably should help them, but if we, can we spend money and say, then we call Boss and say, you know, we're gonna put you on notice, say, this is all we have spent to correct the problems? You know, do we go to litigation? Do we charge, do we file a lawsuit against them and say, you're gonna pay us?
We, um, no, because we're really, we would have to evaluate that and we can bring it back and ask you, but I, my first, first reaction would be we, we wouldn't be able to do that.
No.
They would sue.
Yeah.
They would sue, we wouldn't have any say.
The residents.
I know, I know the residents can, but I'm just saying, because if we do it and we spend our money, you know, how do we get it back, you know?
Uh- Actually, in all honesty, what you're doing is, um, your, if you accept this, this is a, a public expenditure, right? So you would not be able to sue them unless there was some kind of defect with what, you know, what you have been doing with the road or the drainage or something. Like they came back and did something to your road or something, then you could sue them, but not before.
My, my concern with all of this is that, you know, we get it right. I mean, obviously there's a lot of moving pieces to this that would still need to be addressed. Uh, I was hoping to be able to use this as a model, uh, because we really, I can't recall us really accepting anything quite like this, accepting a, a, you know, a particular street, uh, here in the county. And it's, for me, it's something that, you know, I, I get that constant request, we all do, I'm sure, in all of our precincts. Uh, but we want to make sure we get it done, uh, the right way. And so that would be my concern with this. Is that it doesn't seem like it's ready. It seems like there's still a lot of parts that need to be answered. And, and until we can do that, I, I can't accept it. Not that I don't want to, but I want to make sure that we don't get ourselves into any kind of obligation that, that we're immediately going to have to start putting money into correct and to fix. Um, there was obviously some, some issues with the developer and what was being dictated to the, to the homeowners. And so that may be an issue they have to take on their own. I mean, I don't, I don't know how that applies to, to us. But I don't want to get into anything where we're having to immediately look at getting some sort of recourse back, uh, from any kind of developer or anyone like that. We need to accept it when it's all proper, when it's all corrected. Uh, doesn't mean that I, like I said, I don't, I don't want to, because I think as soon as we accept this, we're going to get a lot of other requests from other parts in the community, uh, to, to adopt this. And I think for the most part, when we look at it, it, it looks great. The homes look great, you know, the street is in pretty decent condition as far as how it's built. But to me, it's really, it's the drainage. And obviously we can't, uh, as we were told, we can't, you know, separate the two. So until we figure that out, I think we just maybe need to table it, you know, allow staff to continue to work on it and then bring it back once we have some better options.
Laura, let me ask you this. Because the drainage seems to be the problem. If the residents were to purchase the culverts and the county installed them or showed them how to install them, um, then the county could take the road over?
They would have to, um, they, they can provide us easement and then, uh, the question becomes whether, this would be one question, whether or not you can fix it.
Okay Juan-
They donate, they donate that.
The culverts, yeah. And Juan, are, are you listening? And that would be mean that all of them would have to do it, I would assume. So, and I know some of them are listening, but we're trying to find a solution. Because I don't think Voss is going to help anybody and you'd have to have a lot of money probably to sue them. I don't think those residents. I mean, I know they've thought about it and I don't think the city's going to help us. I just don't want us to leave them in limbo. And I get it, that we don't have it all together. But, um, if that's a possibility, I'd like for us to be able to look at it. Juan, are you, have a comment on that?
Can you repeat that again Commissioner?
If they were to purchase the culverts, could the county install them and then would that suffice for the drainage? And we know eighteen eighty-nine is going to work on that road. They've already told us that. And, and we were going to discuss the drainage with them as well.
One, one thing with that Commissioner is that, if you look at those photos that I, that I presented, um, all those driveways are concrete driveways. So it's, it, 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 it's going to be a costly, it's going to be costly.
So, how do you fix the drainage? How do you fix it? How do we help them? We have to find a solution. You're saying costly, if they, if they purchase the culvert?
Y- yes ma'am, because we would have to break out, we would have to break up the concrete. And then, um, our, our, the way we construct the driveways, uh, when we do a driveway permit, is we, we go out there, we survey the property, we survey it, we install the culverts, uh, we put base material and then we put, either we have asphalt or we have wrap, we'll put that on there. And looking at all these driveways, they're all concrete driveways. Um, um, I mean, but we can, we can coordinate that with, uh, with, uh, with the owner.
Okay, I say that we, we do this. That we get with the subdivision and see if they're interested in even doing that. But in the meantime, we meet with the city of Corpus Christi, because they are the prime ones that created this problem, because they have not held his feet to the fire. And they obviously approved it when he didn't have a drainage solution. He must have drainage, but what he did wasn't correct. Um, get with them and get with Voss as well.
Okay.
What do you think? Judge?
Yes, I've, I've been thinking here as well. I think it sounds like there's a will from this court, uh, to take over the maintenance of the road. It, it, it appears that way to me. And if there was a way to sever, we would all be, it sounds like in favor of that severance and taking over that road. Um, it seems like this is a legal problem. And what I would like to do is definitely table it to the next meeting so that I can get involved and help, uh, try to create some sort of a, you know, a solution here. Um, I, I like the idea very much. I don't know what the homeowners would say. But the drainage is the big issue. As a sub note, I'd like to visit with Maria and I was texting, I was just about to, to press send. I'd like to see if maybe this could be addressed in a, in a grant program so that we would design the detention pond, uh, Juan, and that we could grant our way to getting it done if, if that was an opportunity. In other words, taking over the road is great, but solving the drainage is better. And we have some opportunities right now, um, where we're doing that for other areas. And including Tierra Grande, Blue Bonnet, uh, Petronilla and, uh, and another one that I can't remember the name of, it's in Robstown, Commissioner Modis. But the point is, is that this is the time to start talking drainage solutions. Because there's actually dollars out there for drainage solutions. But this one is, that you really do have somebody to blame. And that doesn't always happen. Um, and so I, I think that there is a responsible party and that responsible party needs to at least answer to the, to that complaint that's been levied against them. But I do think we can help. I just think we have to find a very prescriptive way legally Laura, to get it done. And it might mean the homeowners themselves, exactly what you said, is granting us an easement to their road. Although you say it's a public road, but it's attached to a drainage, which I don't understand that. I, I, I haven't seen any, you know, I haven't been involved with the conversations, but I'd like to see how we can get this done. I mean, it's going to have to be a creative solution if we want to take the road and the road only. But I think if you really want to help these folks, we got to come up with a drainage solution long term.
Judge Laura, Laura has a comment.
Yeah, we, we, we didn't get involved in this Judge. This is the first time we hear of it. So we'll follow up on it with Juan, um, and come up with something.
Thank you. Is, Commissioner, is, is that, can we, can we kind of go back to the drawing board and let all the good folks know that over at A Mandalane that we're on it? It's a little more complex than us just saying yes because of the implications. Uh, but that we're not, that we're still on board with trying to solve the problem?
I think this is a good route and I appreciate the court. Um, I think it's better if we all work on it together with Laura and the city and Juan. So I think, and Voss and the judge, if you can help us, you know, your stroke's a lot bigger than mine. So that would be very helpful.
Okay, I think it's, it's good. I, this is, uh, you know, really important to make certain. And the other thing I'm kind of questioning is, what are they doing planning for a hundred-year flood? Don't they know that we're at the five hundred and thousand-year floods now? If that, if, if the one hundred-year flood detention pond filled up with the rains we just had, which were almost nothing, I'm concerned about that too. I, Juan, I mean, I, obviously I'm not in charge of that other subdivision and that's probably why they're building up. But nobody's doing hundred-year anything anymore. It's just, it's not appropriate for the, for the climate change and the weather patterns that we're seeing.
Judge, and I'm not, I'm not sure construction wise if they're complicated with that pond. So, um, I'll get with the, with the city and the developer and see where they're at. It might be that they stopped because water's already, because of the rains, there's water there. And they're not digging out any, anymore of that pond. And so we'll look at that and we'll see that, make sure that we construct a-
Judge, just a general, just a general comment on that. The, the hundred-year design, it is actually very appropriate in a sense that, well, the problem was, was the city was requiring five-year drainage plans, which was, that's the problem. So if you get it to help for these, nowadays to do a hundred, and Juan can correct me if I'm wrong, that's a humongous difference than what it was. So, and it's, and it's hard to, to develop to a hundred because of, you know, lose a lot of land, right? So just getting the developers and Juan, very instrumental in this, probably, so if, if getting these developers to do more, holding their feet to the fire, getting more great, uh, capacity, which is, which is a compliment to them. But if, if you got every developer down to do a hundred years drainage district, it would make a significant difference. Because right now, there's, right Juan, like five years and ten years, it's, it's, it's crazy.
Yeah, but that, that's the problem is that when your thresholds are below the bar, it looks like it's great. But our weather, I mean, we're, we're just not in, I agree, it's a huge, you know, it's a big step up. But that's why that watershed basin study is so important. It's going to tell us what's, what's appropriate or what's not. And maybe, you know, but when you're, you just have to look at the, just look at the GIS map that was shown a second ago. You're just one hundred percent flat with agricultural all around you. You're just never going to get the drainage unless, you know, we, we properly prepare. But at any rate, well, let's hope that, um, that we have some success here. Because that's the goal, is to try to help these folks.
Can I make a motion to table?
Second, second.
And I'll take a second on that motion.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion to table. And then can someone point out the date of our next court meeting?
It will be Au- uh, August the twelfth.
Okay, so August-
You want it that fast?
Well, I'll leave it on and if it, if we have some update, we'll give it and it'll, it'll put fire under our feet. And if it doesn't work, we'll go to the next one. Is that fair enough Commissioner Vaughn?
That's fair enough. Thank you.
And I'd really like to know, and I'm sure Laura will look farther into this, because I, I would really love to know if there's any way, shape or form that we, and this, not only for this project, but for many, that we can sever these. Because, you know, that's, gosh, that's really an interesting legal concept. So if, if there's anything that we can find that we can, you know, get, you know, the road brought in, I think everybody definitely wants to do that.
Okay, we'll get a, we'll get a report back here very soon. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, okay, great. Um, the next, uh, public works item is to discuss and consider the selection of Jacobs Engineering Group to provide post hurricane inspection of Bob Hall Pier. And of course, this item does actually ask us to authorize the execution of this engineering service contract. And because it's engineering services, it's obviously an exception to the, uh, procurement rules. And, uh, they are professional services. Um, Sydney, um, Voss is the gentleman that I've been visiting with, uh, from Jacobs. And they did the baseline, um, report that was given to us. And they are probably in the best possible position to, uh, give us a new structural report after Hurricane Hannah. After we do this, um, um, question and answer, we'll get the report from Commissioner Chesney. And, um, uh, with regards to Congressman Cloud's visit with, um, with Commissioner Chesney and, and Chairman Hunter and Renee Garcia from the GLO that occurred this morning at ten AM out at our Coastal Parks Office and then subsequently at Bob Hall Pier. Um, Juan, will you take us through this, um, particular scope of work?
Yes ma'am. Uh, Judge, uh, Commissioners, uh, there is a, a copy, a draft copy of, of the, of the document for, um, for Jacobs Engineering. Um, Belinda in, in, and has reviewed the contracts, the, that there are a couple of items that need to be modified, Judge. Um, is there a way that we can recommend to approve, uh, you signing the contract? Contingent that those two items get, uh, modified by Jacobs?
Yes, I would like to do that as time is of the essence with all of these projects. I would remind the court, they're under a thirty-day rule with regards to FEMA. And so you want to make sure that you make some decisions, you know, quickly, uh, so that you can be entitled, uh, to reimbursement.
Judge, the recommendation is to select them as well as, uh, go ahead and the recommendation is to, um, authorize the execution of this contract for a hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three, subject to those, uh, specific, uh, changes that need to be done by the, uh, uh, the other side, which they're working on it right now. So subject to, um, the CA, the county attorneys, um, accomplishing that. But our recommendation is to go forward, substitute those terms.
Great. I'd like to have somebody echo that in a motion.
Judge, and that they can still, they, they can start working, right? I mean, on it, on this, while we're waiting for the contract, can they do that?
As soon as that is done. I mean, we'll, we'll see. I mean, it's, it's going to be done. I mean, it's a couple of things that they just need to do. We, we just need to push them to hurry up.
Well, I think this was under Judge Canales's emergency powers also. I think some of that's how they've been going. So I wouldn't think they need to stop because I'm, I'm with the judge.
Agreed.
Need to keep moving on.
And I think Laura's saying it's going to get done, looking to split here.
Right.
So, um, if there's no other questions with regards to this, I'll make that motion, subject to those two items being, um, I guess amended on the contract and, uh, accepted by Jacobs Engineering.
Second.
And motion and a second. And just wanted to say also, um, Jacobs was kind enough to accompany, uh, me to the governor's briefing. And so just so you know, they, I just want to say, in case they're listening, just want to say thank you again for getting, um, the schematics, for spending the time and, uh, making certain that everybody, including, uh, the FEMA, uh, regional rep was, was full, fully informed. You guys were the experts on the ground and it was very appreciated by the court. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Okay, okay. Um, everybody hear that? I just heard Chesney and myself. I'm guessing everything else went well.
All approve.
Okay, it's, I'm catching a little bit of a delay. And so now we're going to turn, I know that, um, it's, it's, um, I'm going to open back up public comment Laura, is that appropriate? I was thinking to myself, wonder if, if that's the way to do it. So that Commissioner Chesney can give the court a report on, uh, Bob Hall Pier? Or is it okay to do it as part of this, um, add-on, uh, for this item?
Okay. It's fine Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you Judge. Um, and thank you Judge for calling me to, uh, to go out there. I know you were, you would have definitely been there if you weren't in quarantine. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to, to go out there today. Um, met today, as you mentioned, with Renee Garcia from GLO, State Representative Todd Hunter, Congressman Cloud and his staff, and then Alana Scott, um, the Assistant Director of Coastal Parks, Oasis County Coastal Parks. Um, he, he viewed the damage. Uh, I'll start with Congressman Cloud. Uh, the threshold issue came up. There was a, there's been a question raised about whether or not Oasis County or we meet a threshold for damage to be able to get federal assistance. That kind of was surprising to Congressman Cloud as he has said, he has already talked to the White House about this issue and getting Bob Hall Pier, um, fixed. And he did not, he didn't get any pushback on that. But he, he said he will definitely help when, with everything that he can to make sure that there's not a, a threshold issue, meaning we have to have a certain amount of damage before we can qualify for any federal assistance. He's going to get to work on that and, and make sure that, um, that, that's not an issue. Um, Chairman Hunter indicated the faster that we get him, um, even an estimate on this, um, you know, repair, rebuild, whatever the range may be. He said, uh, we explained to him that, um, the judge had laid out a thirty-day, uh, plan of action in regards to getting, uh, information back from Jacobs and, and getting some sort of damage assessment, whether we can rebuild or, or it has to be taken down or whatever the case may be. Uh, indicated, to my knowledge, based on a conversation with Scott Cross, that we, that we were still on, um, a track with Jacobs in regards to getting something, something, maybe an update sooner than thirty days, but certainly a damage assessment, a pretty good damage assessment by that thirty-day period. Again, Representative Hunter mentioned that if we had any in- information, even as a guestimate, he would be able to, to take that and start, you know, working his contacts at the state. And he was very, um, helpful in regards to that. Uh, the GLO mentioned, Judge, which was interesting, uh, and, and with Juan on the line, I know it's public comment, can't discuss, but with- comment, can't discuss, but with the question that we had, or that the GLO had, was, do we want to recycle the asphalt of the road? If we do, then we just need to move the asphalt out of the way, and they will get on the debris pickup immediately. If they want us, or if we want them to pick up the asphalt, because we're not going to use it, then they will also gladly pick that up. They just need to know the answer to that. So again, I know we can't debate it, but I'm just saying, because I know, I think Juan's still on the line, and hopefully hears that, and Alanna was going to reach out to him. But overall, I think it was good to, to get out there and see it. I really certainly appreciate Congressman Cloud, Chairman Hunter, coming out there, and the GLO as well. Hopefully we can actually get the land commissioner down to see it himself at some point. Judge, it might be good, maybe you and I extended an invitation to Commissioner Bush jointly to, to come down and, and view it as well, just so that he can see personally what the heck is going on with that pier. So I think we're off and running. And I, we just need to get them a few things, but the ball's in their court mostly. But we need to get them a few things. And Alanna and Scott, I know, are working on that. So that's, that's basically my, as quick as I can make that assessment. I think that covers the high points of that meeting. So I appreciate, again, Judge, you asking me to go do that. And I appreciate being included. Thank you.
That's good. And, and I'm going to ask that we kind of have a standing agenda item for August 12th, just a placeholder, because I think there will be some more opportunity to say some more things. And that way, we don't have to worry about it being in comment or not, just that we get it as a placeholder. Things are going to happen quickly, and we're going to want to be able to have flexibility to have reports, or engineers come and talk to us, or the GLO, or, or just, you know, whatever. So just want to make sure that, in fact, I'm going to visit with you, Commissioner, in just a little bit about a call that we're going to hopefully jump on with the GLO tomorrow, as well as a possible beach cleanup day that's being spearheaded by some amazing young, an amazing young woman who is actually a 4-Her. So here's to those country girls helping all the coast, coast, people from the coast. And it just shows you that we're one big Moises County. So, pretty exciting stuff. And just want to, again, say thank you for being flexible and running out there with your iPad. And thank God for Wi-Fi, because you're able to do both. And we see the birds in the background, so we know where you are.
Thank you.
Okay, super. So we're going to move on to the auditor. And he has a budget change order for us. And that is, Dale, it's number 19, actually.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is Budget Change Order Number 19 for our current fiscal year. There are a few departments requesting some changes. I'll go through some of them. Our county clerk elections is needing a, a additional cost, because they had to rent a truck for the primary and runoff elections. And that was a cost that they didn't expect for, because of how we had to change some of our, our election costs. Some of our billings are using a lot more supplies for, for cleaning. And if it's definitely COVID-related, we'll make sure we, we track that cost in the proper department. However, they are needing some more cost for cleaning purposes, and we feel that being necessary. The big one's on page two, and that's for the, the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds is needing to buy some capital equipment, a John Deere mower, that costs around $35,000. Bunker and Field Rakes at 14,000, and additional costs, some insurance. They have some funds available to move the balances around in Fund 14 for this particular items. This is the items they have for you on Budget Change Order 19, and has submitted for your approval.
Okay, and I make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Then is there any discussion or questions for Dale regarding those items from the county clerk's office that she needed? And also, the items for the fairgrounds, which are basically equipment?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, hearing none, all those in favor of approving Budget Change Order Number 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, I'm going to go back in time to item number one. That will complete, after we finish this item, our County Commissioners Court meeting. I noticed that there is no items for executive sessions. I'll let the public know that after we finish item number one, we will immediately move to adjourn in memory of. And so with that, oh, I'm so sorry. Actually, that's not the case. Sorry about that, Tyner. You had given me the, the heads up, and I forgot. There is some, Laura, there is some housekeeping to do on item 3A3, regarding the clerk fee that we wish to put into motion. And that is, is that we probably need to, knowing that that's the will of the court, we actually need to bring it back on the agenda. Tyner's going to suggest September 9 to make it truly official, because we need 15 days to post a public hearing. We've got to put notice up. So I think that with your blessing, and, and also if, if the clerk would make the, the adjustment, I can revisit item 3A3 and make a new motion that, that we, we address the actual filing, I'm sorry, the actual fee being assessed on September the 9. And that in the meantime, we proceed with the 15 days of published notice for public hearing.
That's correct, Judge.
Is that correct, Tyner?
That's correct, Judge. I think, I think the earliest meeting would be then. That would give us time to publish it in the paper. And then also, I wanted to make the point, if, if budget was $290,000 for a $5 fee, and if the court is going to entertain a $10 fee, the budget should be doubled. And since we're in budget, there's time for that. It would be 580,000, just for your information.
No, that's, that's good information for the court to have. And, and again, it's going to, I think, really open the door to be able to take care of, of the archives that just need, oh my goodness, it's, it's sad, millions and millions of dollars. But, but having said that, this is a terrific start. And that's what the district clerk did. You know, you've got to begin somewhere. And once you have a revenue stream, you can continue on a plan to, to properly archive these documents. And I think archiving is becoming more important than ever. No one's ever going to believe us. Our grandchildren are never going to believe what we went through in 2020. And, and so archiving is important for posterity. All these records that are there, as, as the county clerk says, there's, if it's current, it gets done. But if it's, if it's old, it needs, it needs its archiving. So, anyway, thank you, Tyner, for making sure that we got all of that accurate and straight. And I want to make sure for the county attorney, since I can't see her, if that's acceptable, that, that we make a new motion with regards to, or whether or not I need a motion at all to public, to, to instruct us to post the notice for public hearing.
You had already made a, a motion before to basically say, to follow, that you were going to follow all those requirements, and one of them was going to the public hearing.
Okay, so you think we're good, then?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I just let the court know, we'll bring it back on September 9, after all of those have been done. Okay, perfect. Tyner, I think that takes care of our housekeeping issue. And now we can go to item number one on our regular agenda. And this, I've got Melissa Mungia, but I'm not sure if she's ready. We'll give her a little bit of chance to, to come in. And it's actually F1 for the clerk, F1. And
So Judge, can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Okay, let me see. I'm having an issue with my, my video, so give me just a moment.
Okay.
I think I know how to fix it. I thought I did. If you, if we want to start, that's fine. I can continue to try to.
Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
Melissa, Melissa, push the video, start video button at the bottom of the meeting screen.
Yes, that is what I've done. And it's, it's telling me I need to go to my settings and change my privacy setting.
Oops.
So, give me just a moment, my So I am not seeing this. Connie, is there something that I should be seeing when I go in my privacy setting?
Not that I'm aware. I'm, I'm going to talk to my department, have somebody come up there.
I'm actually remote right now.
Oh, never mind. Let me look into it.
We can hear you.
That's okay, Melissa. I mean, we, we hear you loud and clear, and, and we're happy to have you on, so.
Sure, I'll keep, I'll keep trying to work on this end, on getting that fixed. But good morning, Judge and Commissioners. It's been a, a long week for everybody. So I know that you guys have been working very hard to make sure that the public is staying informed on, on everything that's going on. So this is an opportunity for us to, to do exactly that. And so just, just going to, like I've done before, is just kind of run down a list of some of the activities and operations that are going on. Of course, you know, we do have simultaneous disaster management happening right now with COVID-19 and Hurricane Hannah. But I'm going to focus right now on COVID-19. So as you know, we did have a positive in our EOC team, our write-out team. So that triggered a series of placing folks both in quarantine and setting up employee testing, which was done on Monday. I believe we have another one set for Thursday for more folks that have come forward. So total employees tested on Monday was 24. We took immediate action to ensure that we captured anybody that may have come in contact, took the action of doing the, the, the contact tracing ahead of, of public health, so that we could capture everybody as quickly as possible. So I've been reported, you know, so many negatives for our write-out team that had come together for Hannah response, and that had been working together on setting up the clinic. And so this is, this is, for, for me, a sigh of relief that we were able to capture this quickly, and that our team, our, our write-out team, our critical folks are negative. But of course, quarantining for the rest of the period that we're required to. So we are working remotely. But all of the operations continue to be worked on. Testing is still happening, and of course, employee testing as well. The, the biggest thing being the clinic, the COVID clinic that's been worked on, and now has done a soft opening on August 3. We had a little interruption as far as some delays that came just from assessing who all had been in contact with, with the known positive. So moving forward, everybody was identified and quarantined, and the rest of the teams continued to work forward on, on doing the soft opening. We're also working simultaneously on the isolation facility, which now that we're working very closely with the City of Corpus Christi, and the, the team, Social Services, and the other teams that are dedicated to making sure that this particular population that we are concerned about, that is in, in some state of isolation and quarantine, causing them to, to be homeless and needing a place to stay. So that's a facility that's still critical for us to have, and it also has the potential to have multiple purposes. One of the things that we're working on for that, and a, a letter was being generated to express the need for this team that we want to request for the isolation facility, and that is BCFS Teams, that's Baptist Child and Family Services. The Emergency Management Division specializes in, in sheltering and disaster management. So we are requesting from the state now, a, a specialized team to come in and assist with the operation would be our Incident Command Team on site for us, to help us run the isolation facility team. And that would be, that would be in coordination, of course, with the hospitals, the COVID clinic, and of course, our testing operations as part of this larger system for long-term COVID response and management. You know, yesterday, we look at the numbers from yesterday, we see that, of course, we are still in a, in a increase, in a rising pattern. Yesterday, we had 13,0062 positives and deaths, we were at 212. So we are still seeing ourself increase, which makes the need for this system of facilities working together to manage COVID in our community. The need for it's still there. We also have HCA, which has created their alternative care site, or their, their care overflow site at Northwest, and had last week moved their first patients. So they began moving patients. I believe the first round was four patients, almost kind of like a soft opening for their alternative care site. And the transition of those patients went successfully, and they're continuing to come together. Excuse me, the NCHD board met and are continuing to make decisions for how the alternative care site is going to continue to function. I don't want to kind of mix COVID-19 and Bob Hall Pier, but in a way, you know, for us, it's, it's all kind of related. Judge, is there anything, or Commissioners, that you wanted to touch base on right now? I, I know that's a lot of different projects that I, that I spoke about. Is there anything that you wanted to focus, focus on in particular right now?
Well, I wanted to just bring attention to the fact that I'm going to be sending, I'm, I, I've, I have a draft letter, and I'll send it to you. I just need to make sure that Maggie is listening, and she can get this to Tyner, and he can get it to you. But it's a draft letter that really speaks to the CARES Act dollars, and last Commissioner Courts meeting, where we all agreed to send a transfer allocation form to the city. And that needs to get on their agenda for next week, so that they can discuss and ultimately, and hopefully approve it without fanfare, so that we can make certain that we have enough dollars to go forward with our COVID-19 response for our county through December 31st, 2020. And I'm taking advantage of the fact that we're all talking here. So Dale, I think I might have shot just a quick little email to you. One of the things that I think is important is that you have a great burn rate every day, but we need to anticipate, and I know it's just a projection, but if you could assist with projecting what, if you kept these burn rates going, you know, what that ultimate end date, December 31st, 2020, might look like. Of course, not every expenditure is repeated, repeated, correct? So you have to actually go through it and, and work to see which ones would need to be ongoing. And the same thing goes for the COVID clinic, and we're going to be working with, in fact, I'd like to give you the new name. It's not going to be called the COVID Clinic anymore. It's called Amistad Community Care Clinic, colon, a partnership with City Corpus Christi and Moises County. And I really like that name, and I think it's a real testament to what partnerships can bring. So that's the full name of the clinic, and there'll be ongoing expenses. And so we're trying to put those together. And the same thing goes with the ISOPAC unit. You should know that, that it's in complete coordination with the City of Corpus Christi, and particularly working with their EOC and their, their office of, their homeless initiative department. And then, let's see, Melissa, the other thing I need to make mention of is that I'm very proud of the fact that HCA and their consultants that they've brought on board have really answered the call. The goal was always to get extra beds for our community in the form of an alternate care site. And we're going to be working with Hillary Watts from CBRAC to make sure that the state registers this site as an alternate care site. And there are some things that are missing that are really important. In fact, it's why Memorial was thought of first, rather than this particular locale. And that is medical gases do not exist at this, at this location, and they need to. So there will need to be a large expenditure. So there will need to be a large expenditure made for those medical gases that are absolutely required. And also there's no real dietary, whereas Memorial and Christus has dietary. So, um, but what I'm excited about is that HCA has already spent, uh, seven figures in, in starting this process. Their consultant and I had an opportunity to meet. Um, it's definitely, um, a project that is so needed. HCA, who owns 19 different hospitals in Texas and, uh, the CEO who came from Houston in the middle of COVID to our community is absolutely adamant that this is an important overall part to that, which is the cumulative effect in our cumulative COVID-19 response for the future. It's not a matter of if, he says, it's a matter of when we see another surge. And so I think that, uh, it's, it's just great news. And, uh, so there'll be some expenditures with regards to getting that ACS unit online. And it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a, it's a very good, uh, uh, site because it also has an emergency room. So if you had critical, uh, need, critical care needs, you could address them on site. So anyway, that's a little bit more detail maybe than you wanted, but I always try to provide as much detail as possible. There's also, um, the, uh, there, there's so many other things, but those are things that I think are, are critical. We are working on a, a case management system as well with the Health District and, um, the Health Department, I should say. And that's so that we can get a much better handle on the data. And that way we can have a system going forward that helps us track recoveries better, helps us track current COVID-19 positive symptoms better. And we're changing our, our ways because we're learning more about this virus. And so, for example, now at the Health Department, and that's where I tested, I can now say with confidence, I think I've tested every single possible way. And I'm so amazed at how well the Health, um, the, the Health Department, they just have a great system, a great protocol, very friendly. And they are, um, doing pulse oximeter readings when you get tested now. So for example, everybody that goes in, if you test positive, you will know what their, um, uh, their oxygen levels are at that time. That will help us determine whether or not that particular person will need quick examination or perhaps some telehealth immediately. So I just want you to know that we're constantly evolving. Nothing stays the same, nothing. Every day something new happens, whether it's a rule that comes down from dishes or whether it's a guidance that comes down from the CDC. It's, it's, it's very dynamic. And, and so I just want you to know that we continue to work, um, I think very collaboratively with the city. Uh, one other thing to note is that the press briefings will be changed to, um, Tuesdays and Fridays. And I would encourage you guys to definitely pay attention to Fridays. If you can't pay attention to both days, Fridays are the days where the modelers from Texas A&amp;M use the data collected from the previous week to showcase the data that I'm always referring to. And I've asked them last night to give me an advanced copy so I can get to all of you. And also, um, the data from last week, uh, clearly indicates that, uh, the Coastal Bend unfortunately, along with Laredo and Victoria, are still leading the pack in the state of Texas in all the categories. So when we say what data is driving your decisions, it's that data. It's the data that we are at the top, not at the middle. I wish we were at the bottom. We are at the very, very top of incident rates on hospitalizations, ICUs, fatalities, and positivities. And so, w- once we get out of that top level, we're gonna be in a lot better shape as a community. And you'll see that when that data indicates that, there'll be definitely opportunities to create more flexibility with how we live. So anyway, just wanna share that with you. A Friday afternoon will be the public version of it. I'm gonna try to get you guys an advanced copy. But, um, they use, um, data that also compares us to our, uh, they use it as a regional, a resource. So for example, you won't just see us in isolation, you'll see our region. And you might say, well, why would you want to see everybody else? Or why would you want to combine the data? And the answer is, is because that's the healthcare region that we're working under. So if you get sick in Clayburg, yes, you might go to that Clayburg Hospital, but if you need a subspecialist or a particular, um, i- i- if you need to be treated with, with high level of critical care, you're most likely gonna be transferred to Corpus Christi. Because this is the center, this is a healthcare regional center for, for at least 12 to 14 counties. And so I just, I, you have to look at the whole data set in order to understand when we say we're strained. So when you look at just a few hospitals, um, and, and I noticed that there was some data that was being circulated that showed, uh, certain types of capacity. HCA yesterday indicated on the record that they are still strained. Christus Spahn is still strained. I know they're still strained. And I know why they're still strained, because I got three-star requests yesterday that crossed my desk for additional staff and/or extensions of staff. When we don't see those staff requests going in, that's when you know you're no longer a community in crisis. And so much of what's happening to us now, if you don't have a loved one or someone that you're very close to that's struggling with COVID-19, it's easy to think that it's not as bad as we say it is. It's very easy. It reminds me of how war is played out on television, but not in our backyards. We don't feel the daily sacrifices of war because it's fought on another foreign soil away from us. And so I think that it's really important to, to keep in mind that as long as we're seeing requests for staff at our hospitals, as long as ICUs continue to go up as they did yesterday and deaths continue to go completely on a upward slope, uh, we're not in good shape yet. And, um, but I, I certainly hope and pray along with all of you that our days are numbered here and that we will see this slope continue to come down. And I'm grateful that, um, every day that the numbers don't look as bad as the day before. I think this is the day. This is the day that's our turning point. And I know our turning point is coming because it appears that, that, um, that it's happening all over Texas. But sadly for the Coastal Bend, the data shows that we are still, uh, one of the highest rating, uh, areas in, in our state and in fact in our nation. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions. Melissa, uh, on Hannah, I think you've done a good job. We had an opportunity to talk about the pier. There's also the opportunity to talk about North Beach and those drainage issues as well as, um, just making sure that, that we do everything we can to, uh, continue to document all of our costs.
Judge.
I just wanna say, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Judge, I just wanna, um, make a quick, quick comment. Um, I, I just wanted to, to thank you for your efforts. Um, I, I don't always agree with you on everything. We've had our issues on things and COVID-related and other things, but I, I want you to know sincerely, uh, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, I would not want to be a county judge, uh, in this disaster. I know you have, regardless of whether we agree or not, I've never doubted your intentions. I think you have spent 24/7 on this, on this thing. And I, I, I sincerely appreciate, and I'm, I'm really saying that with, with heartfelt sincerity. I sincerely appreciate the work you've put into this. Um, and I, I just, I'm sorry you've had to go through this. I'm sorry this whole community's had to go through this. And I hope you're right. I hope we are getting to a point where we can see some light at the end of the tunnel 'cause I certainly haven't seen it yet. It would be nice to see some. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did your wife tell you to say that?
No, tell me.
Thank you. Um, it's nice to, thank you. Sometimes it's just enough to say thank you. Um, I appreciate, one more thing, and I wanted to say this. I wanna say thank you to every member of the write-out team, every single one of you. Whether you worked virtually or whether you with, were you were with us in that EOC room, I want to say that you are amazing. You put your job ahead of yourself and your family. And you did great work. We were, um, talking amongst ourselves just last week about, um, all of the things that we're learning and all of the things that we want to do to improve our write-out team's success. And sometimes it's, we forget to just, instead of thinking about all the things we didn't do perfectly, sometimes it's a good time just to say, hey, nobody else is up here in the middle of the night, uh, but you guys. And so for the write-out team that's listening and Melissa, whoever's not listening, since you're their commander in chief, would you please relay to them on behalf of a super grateful court how much it means to us that they do make those sacrifices? And, and we are a better county for it. And I just, I can't wait till, remember the days we used to have, you know, events called Employee Appreciation with popcorn and snow cones and those some, no, don't you wish for those days to come back again?
The simpler days.
I'm already dreaming of 2021, um, because I think 2020, we're gonna be in a tough spot still. But thanks to you and thanks to Kathy, Brenda, that's the immediate team, but then there's a bigger team. And they need to, they can't hear it enough as far as I'm concerned. If, uh, if it were appropriate, I never served in the military, so it's not appropriate. But my salute is to Nwasis County EOC write-out team for the double disaster. And I would like to ask for all of the court's prayers, that we see no more disasters this year. We've had enough. We are, it is time to let us continue our response. And I can appreciate Commissioner Chesney's words because I've had a lot of people say, boy, I wouldn't wanna be in your shoes. Well, here's the good news. I like my shoes. I'm happy I'm the county judge. I'm happy I'm even in this double disaster. I feel like God and everything, all of my life experiences have prepared me for this moment. And although it's not what I expected, and often it's not fun, um, it is still meaningful to me and I'm still so proud to serve with you, Melissa. And like I said, the entire team. I just can't list them all right now. So those are my parting words today. There are a lot of documents that I'd start to like to get to Commissioners about Hurricane Hannah. Um, so it's okay to.
That's just one thing that I did wanna mention, Judge, is that we are working on, for Hannah, the disaster summary outline. And that's gonna be the critical document for us to get up to the state that captures, um, the true damages. We received yesterday the port of Corpus Christi's, uh, Danielle Hale sent that forward, which I've sent, um, to Dale. So as we start gathering those, as well as our own, our own assessments on the damage on Bob Hall and the, the beaches, as well as, um, our western cities and other unincorporated areas, as we start to get those numbers together and create this disaster summary outline, um, those are the documents, those are the numbers that help get us to that threshold, um, that everybody's talking about. And, and those disaster summary outlines can't be done quickly because it does take time to assess damage. You're talking about surveys, you're talking about engineers. So it does take time, uh, but that document will start coming together.
And forgive me, Melissa, but what are you thinking timeline-wise?
I, I mean, that's difficult to say. I mean, I'd really like for us to have something to submit in, you know, maybe about a week's time just to at least give them like whatever preliminary numbers we have. Um, they'll know that that's gonna continue to rise. It's basically a draft summary outline that's, um, going to continue to grow. But it gives them something to base, to have a baseline, uh, number to start with. Um, but we really wanna be able to get a really good, solid, comprehensive disaster summary outline submitted where we are capturing all of the numbers, um, even if that means us waiting a little bit longer to submit it so that we put forth that true number, that, that real number that we want, uh, to see because it's the, the real number that exists for the damage here in the county.
And, and also, I don't wanna belabor it, but, uh, Commissioner Chesney, there wa, there is a huge piece of this pie that really needs to also, we're gonna have to have a little, uh, discussion about. Maybe it also gets back on the agenda for next time. And that is the survey that Melissa's talking about. Uh, there has to be per, um, we've got two important dates. One is the Corps of Engineers gives you two years to use their permit under the emergency permit to rebuild. And then the other one is the GLO's requirement that in 90 days, we do this survey uh, that basically outlines our new vegetation line. And, um, the best person in my mind to do it luckily lives here in Corpus Christi and is associated with Texas A&amp;M. And so we're gonna have to get back with you on that. I don't wanna make a whole nother issue of it, but just know that Melissa is working with, working on that right now with Scott Cross. And we'll get it to you as soon as we get something in writing. Um, I know there's, I know that that survey is apparently the most important thing we can do in order to, you know, continue this process. Let me tell you one bad thing, and Juan, you're on the line. One thing I'm worried about for us as a court is dune protection permits. Dune protection permits are gonna be, uh, continuing to come in, but the dunes have changed. The dune line has changed, the beach line has changed. But if we're gonna get a strong renourishment program, aga, uh, you know, put forth on our beach, we have to get through these processes. So I'm gonna say that today, I, I'm bringing it for awareness, but August 12th, most likely we will have lots of meetings between then and August 12th. We will work together to, um, you know, to, to get that survey to court. And that's the one I'm more worried about because money-wise, that's why it's so important to get FEMA, uh, to, to get us together. You know, to, to make sure we meet that threshold because what, that survey is what determines, uh, the new vegetation line. Amazing what Mother Nature will cause you to do, right? Okay, Melissa, I appreciate your, your follow-up. And, uh, I would ask the court, do you have any questions of Melissa? And, uh, okay. Melissa, thank you. Well, we'll all be back in the saddle on Monday. No one asked us this, but I wanna offer, um, we've contemplated somebody in EOC being COVID-positive. And the reason we did that is 'cause you never know, right? If somebody's asymptomatic. So only half of your write-out team was with us. The rest of the write-out team was virtual. So we didn't knock everybody out. And that was done with some really good foresight, but you needed your main people in the room. So those are just the risks that we take as first responders. And, um, again, my heartfelt thanks for all of us. Um, we'll be out of quarantine very soon and we will be back, uh, at the courthouse, uh, on Monday.
Yes, thank you, Judge, and thank you Commissioners, and thank you to my team as well. Everybody's working triple overtime, triple hard. Everybody's dedicated, um, to making sure that our community is safe.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I am gonna move over to the last part of our agenda, which is always sad, it's bittersweet. Um, and Commissioner, um, Chesney, I don't know if, I, I, have you seen the text that Tyner just sent us about the sad news?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind? I, I'm crushed by it, so I'm, I know you are too. If you want a moment, we can skip you, but.
Judge, I've got one I'm gonna read for him. I'm gonna read for Commissioner Chesney.
You're gonna read for Brent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It is, it is with profound sadness that I learned at the death of my friend, Dr. David Freeman, "I cannot even get through talking about this without getting emotional, so I have asked Commissioner Bond to share my condolences. Dr. Freeman was a wonderful administrator, father, husband, and friend. His loss to this community and his family will be felt for many, many years. Rest in peace, my friend. I miss you already." Brent Chesney.
We're very, very sorry for your loss. I, uh, he, he, uh, he texted me. Uh, he, he got us some, some messages. He, he was working, let's just say that. He was working hard while he was still in the hospital. And I just want to express our condolences to, to his family, but more importantly to the greater family that is Flower Bluff ISD. Commissioner Bond, do you have any?
Commissioner Vaughn, do you have any?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Modest, do you?
Yeah, yes, I do, Judge. Um I want to share with the the court that uh Esther Oliver, who worked in Congressman Ortiz's office for many years, passed away on July thirty-first. Esther was also uh also with Noises County previously and um she, I've known her my entire life. Um she was battling uh dementia for the last several years of her life, even contacted COVID in these last few months, but it was a very mild case, thankfully. And that's not what it was. She already got over that, I believe. Uh but it's just a a deep loss for for my family, my parents, my in-laws. We just all know her. Um she's, she was my Sunday school teacher. Uh she just always, you know, she was there, saw me grow up. She was a part of my um uh early campaign. She made the campaign buttons for me even before that. Uh she would take me around and make sure I I got to political events because she knew that I loved that long before I even ran for anything. And so um we're just deeply saddened for her loss, but uh thankful for the life that she lived. Uh her daughter uh Linda Harrison works here uh in the court for Ju- uh Judge Nanette Hassett. Uh so um our condolences to Linda and then Lisa, um Esther's other daughter, works for the City of Corpus Christi with Parks and Recreation, has senior services, been there for many years. And then their son, Ralph, and of course, they have a lot of extended family and grandchildren. Uh but I I just wanted to share that that her funeral will be uh celebrated this Friday uh at eleven-thirty and will be online at the church that we attend, Kelsey Memorial United Methodist Church. So um it's, once again, very sad, but we are thankful that she is no longer suffering uh and that she is at peace. And of course, our thoughts and prayers and condolences for Linda, Lisa, Ralph, and the rest of the family.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gonzalez?
I have one. Uh Thelma Reyes Garcia, seventy, passed away July twenty-first, twenty twenty. She was born on June twenty-seven, nineteen fifty. Thelma married her husband of fifty-one years, Pedro Garcia, on October the fifth, nineteen sixty-eight. Thelma was a loving mother. She enjoyed gardening and will be remembered for all, always enjoying life to the fullest. Thelma was always the life of the party. She loved her family, friends, and her dogs. Thelma, grandkids always put a smile on her face and sparkle in her eyes. She will also be remembered for all her beautiful plants outside her house and her dogs. Thelma is survived by her husband, Pedro Garcia, son, David Garcia, daughter-in-law, Jaclyn, and three grandchildren. She will be missed and her condolences and prayers go out to the family. It. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um I was hoping to get um the full name of the person I wanted to adjourn in memory of, but sadly, I don't have it. But suffice it to say that my dear friend, Dr. Nellie Garcia Blow, lost her sister. And I uh I'm just sad for her and for her family. The Blows are amazing healthcare um heroes in our community. And I think it's been especially hard on our healthcare professionals because they've had to lose so many of their own. But on top of that, they have, we're seeing the the effects of of uh of COVID nineteen and and really just even how we celebrate life uh when somebody close to us dies is is almost taken from us. So I just wanted to say that I'm thinking my thoughts and prayers are with uh the doctor, Dr. Blow's family. And uh this actually occurred several weeks ago and I I didn't know about it, so I'd like to make sure that that I extend our condolences uh to Dr. Blow and to both Dr. Blows and and their extended family. And then um if there are no other, does anyone else in the courtroom have any that they would like to uh bring forth at this time? Tyner or Teresa or Dale?
No, Judge.
Okay. Well, in that case, um I'd like to do something that's not on the agenda, but I'd like to uh end on a little bit of a hu- uh positive and a high note. Um it was a good court. It's twelve-thirty. I think that might be a record at least for the last three or four months for a full commissioner's court meeting. So I'm grateful to all of you and I would ask that you all stay very safe and um keep doing everything that you're do- doing. I'm so proud of the court when they fight for their citizens, like I saw Commissioner Vaughn do and and Commissioner Chesney going out to Bob Hall Pier and zooming in and um, you know, all the things that that we do as commissioners every single time we meet. And I think that it's just a testament to what it really means to work together, particularly when you're in a double disaster. Unity will keep us strong. And so uh I thank you for a good court and I hope you'll indulge a county judge to say, happy birthday, Granny. No one's listening, Granny, but I'm well, I'm wishing you the best on your ninety-seventh birthday today. I love you very much.
Judge.
And thanks for a great court.
Judge, wait a minute. One more thing. Did we not know her birthday was what, day before yesterday, yours? Judge and Tyner. And and do you want to tell us how old you are?
I'm fifty-four and and growing.
And you look great. Happy birthday.
Thank you so much. But ninety-seven's a great day and uh you know, it make, doesn't it make you feel good that, you know, life really is to be cherished and and every day is a blessing? But I have to be honest, I'm I'm, I think I'll just skip twenty-twenty on my birthday and I'm ready for a better twenty-twenty-one. Oh, gosh. Well, anyway, I'll I'll see you guys on Monday.
Judge, this is Melissa. I'm just going to say in three days, Talise will be one-year-old.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, that's wonderful.
Happy birthday to her.
And to show you that the circle of life does continue despite all the negative things that we have to endure every day. Miss Margaret had a new beautiful grandbaby. And her name is Parker on my birthday and on Tyner Little's birthday, August the third. So I wish you guys well and I'll see you very soon. This meeting is officially adjourned at twelve-thirty on the dot P M.